Mics are live.
All right. So it is seven o'clock and I'll call this meeting of the Berry City Council to order this Tuesday, October fourth, two thousand and twenty-two at seven P. M. Councillors present include tonight include Council Lozon, Council Stockwell, Council Waszczak, Council Booton, Council Sean Bell and Council Jerry. And I'm Mayor Hemmerich. Staff joining us tonight, we have Manager Strel Castro, Clerk Treasurer Dawes, Jeff Bergeron, Buildings and General Service, our Buildings and Community Services Director, thanks for that, Don Monahan, Finance Director, and I think I have all of staff joining us. Tonight's agenda is available online in the back of the room. This meeting has been publicly posted as being recorded and broadcast and subject to Vermont's open meeting law and the council's rules of procedure which are available online. Like to offer a warm welcome to all the guests joining us in person and online. And if you're joining us online, please keep in mind that the chat function should only be used for technical issues or difficulties. The city offers online access as a convenience and we will continue the meeting if any technical difficulties occur. If you would like to be recognized, please raise your hand or signal that you would like to be recognized. And those in the room should come forward to the front table and speak in the microphone. I'll call on speakers in order, allowing people who haven't spoken to speak first and limiting time if necessary to do the city's business. Please state your name and place residence for the record and and just speak up so everyone can hear you. I want to thank everyone in advance for participating in a civil and respectful manner. If you have any questions about process or procedure, please ask and we'll get it sorted. So that takes us to item number two on the agenda, adjustments to the agenda. And just roll.
Thanks, Mayor. One adjustment, like to request to move item four E from the consent agenda to immediately after the consent agenda. So just if that's all right. This is the authorized the application to A C C D.
And just as a disclosure for that item, I I manage that grant program.
Yeah.
At A C C D and and so I need to disclose a conflict of interest. It's not a pecuniary conflict or interest, but it is a direct conflict of interest. And also I disclosed that on the Department of Housing Community Development side that all scoring of applications that I do are double. Every application is doubled scored to ensure that the integrity of the process is there, but I would not score anything from Berry City on the A C D side. So. All right. Any other adjustments to the consent agenda? Council goes on.
Thank you, Mayor. Could we move ten A? Up, and I guess we'll make that that would become four E because F is moving down. And just a point of clarification on that designation. Traditionally, it's been the manager or his designee who is the delegate during the manager's period of service. So I just wanted to make that a that point of clarification that once we designate the manager, for some reason, the manager couldn't make the meeting. He or she is free to appoint a designee.
Well, taken.
Yep.
All right. Any other adjustments to the agenda tonight?
Should we do that for B as well? I mean, I don't see any discussion regarding that. Unless
there are any objections.
Has a problem with that?
Manager Strel Castro, is there any background information that you wanted to go into there?
No.
So, okay. Are there any objections from council to become four F? Calendar to four F?
I mean, it's it can change. You can make a change or so.
Yes. All right. So when it goes up.
And I'm sorry, one other, I apologize, Mayor, one other item I would like to add to the agenda. Thank you to the manager for sending us the recording of the most recent Diversity and Equity Committee, and I'd just like to get the reaction. I'd like to I'd like the council to have just an brief opportunity to just discuss that. And I'd just like to hear from my colleagues.
Yeah, where in the agenda would you?
At the end, way at the end.
Okay.
Very last.
As I don't
Yep, I think it would be now. Yes.
Okay. Any objections to from any members of council on that? All right. So if I if there are no other adjustments to the agenda, that takes us to visitors and communication. This is an opportunity to speak to a matter that's not on the agenda. A member of the public would like to speak to. Are there any items for communication? Yeah, please come forward.
My name is Dexter LaFavor. I'm running for State Senate, so I'm here to introduce myself to City Council. I know a lot of you. A good percentage of you already. I've done this before and I'm excited to to be doing it again.
Sit down and
Down for the mic.
The microphone.
All right. Let's hope I get the mic standing up. But I live in Middlesex, but I've got four children and one wife. We've got a small farm up there currently growing vegetables, but I have been a a pig farmer in the past and raised horses, really what got me into farming initially. And I'm a civil engineer. My specialty is wet infrastructure. So I do water, wastewater and stormwater work. I was responsible for the planning that went into the upgrade of the Berry City wastewater treatment plant back in nineteen ninety-four. So I I know the ins and outs of that plant. If you've got any questions about that, I'd be happy to take those. But I'm on the ballot. I'm excited to have the opportunity to serve this big district, twenty-three communities. I'm out visiting as many of the city councils and select boards as I can. And I'm at about fifteen or sixteen out of twenty-three so far. So I'm making some good progress and getting some warm responses. So I appreciate your time tonight and just wanted to introduce myself so you'd have a face with my name. I'm happy to answer any questions you have about anything, really.
Thank you for your comments. Any questions? Well, thank you so much for your time and your
Good luck.
Visiting.
Thank you.
Are there any other items for visitors and communication? Mr. Cooper.
Yes. I would like to explain my opposition to Article twenty-two. While it's true that I oppose it in part because it would prevent the legislature from allowing any protections for the preborn. I also find that the proponents campaigned to be fundamentally disingenuous as federal law takes precedence over even a state constitution. The proponents have indicated that based on Roe v Wade being overturned, this is our chance to do something. But federal law, as I said, takes precedence. My main concern is what I call the unintended consequences. First, the law extends reproductive autonomy to men leading to potential disputes of constitutional rights. This this could also open medical providers to lawsuits when choosing one constitutional right over another. The use of the term individual and the failure to include age limits also could also allow what would currently land someone on the sex registry to be constitutionally protected. It has also been made clear that decisions on sterilization would also be protected. And again, there is no age limit. That means that if a teacher convinces an eight-year-old, ten-year-old to be sterilized, it would be constitutionally protected. In addition, those who cannot reproduce naturally also have the same rights, even if the only way to do so is through human cloning. There is also no limit to the number of offspring you can decide that you wish to reproduce. And so for these reasons and others, I would like to, I'm giving you an explanation of my opposition to Article twenty-two because it is dangerous. And if it is if it is adopted, these unintended consequences, we will not have an opportunity to change, to be able to for at least four years. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other items for visitors and communication for an item not on the agenda? All right, hearing and seeing none, that takes us to the consent agenda and we have on the consent agenda, approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting of September twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-two. Approval of city city warrants for from the week of Wednesday, October fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. Clerks offices, licenses and permits.
Or not.
Or not. And we have an approval request for from the Berry Area Veterans Council for Veterans Day Parade. We have the designation of Managers Strel Castro or designee as a voting delegate at the Vermont League of Cities and Towns Annual Meeting Town Fair. And we have the six-month look ahead calendar for city council.
Don't worry. Second.
Oh, okay. Motion by Counselor Waszczak, second by Counselor Sean Bell. Any any discussion?
I thought that the city clerk did an excellent job of capturing a difficult meeting. I thought the notes were excellent.
Thank you.
Shout out for the minutes.
It's a challenge.
Any 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 further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it, the consent agenda is adopted. That takes us to item number five, the city clerk.
Actually, I believe we were going to do.
Right for me, I you're on. What did I do without you? Authorization for the Application of the Agency of Commerce and Community Development by all modernization grant, update zoning and improve resolution two thousand and twenty-two, ten. I will recuse myself and hand over the chair to Council Booton.
All right, is there a motion to approve? Second. And all those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion passes.
You can come back in now.
Do you have a copy of the resolution for signing?
I do.
And I just sometimes they need full council signatures. That's why.
I think it's just the Council Booton, I believe, but I will
As the chair.
As a legislative body chair.
Yeah. Perfect. Thank you.
Whoa, this is a first.
Didn't have you.
Mister Deputy Mayor.
Wow.
My signature is undistinguishable. Thank you.
Yeah, that takes us to item number five on the agenda, the City Clerk Treasurer Report.
Okay, just a couple things. We received yesterday, the first, you may recall back, I think it was in October or November, I did a presentation on the National Opioid Settlements. And council made the took the action for the city of Berry to participate, which meant that we'll receive funds from the settlements for the next eighteen years. We received the first funding yesterday, a little over eight thousand one hundred dollars. On and so and we've we've put it in a designated fund. There are limited uses for it associated with education, support for public safety personnel who who, you know, administer Narcan and various things like that, support for people going through recovery. There's a number of different things that that we can allocate the funds for. And so at some point in time, we'll need to form a group of people to talk about what's the best, what's the best uses. So but I did want to let you know that we got the first allocation. Um, the other thing is just a continuing reminder, which I will do for the next five weeks, five weeks from today, is the general election and ballots went in the mail to all active voters a little over a week ago. We've started to get voted ballots back. Voters can either vote them early and return them to the office either by mail or it comes into the office or drop them in one of the drop boxes. Or it's the exact same ballot that will be distributed at the polls on on November eighth, so you can bring the ballot with you and vote it in the auditorium. Polls will be open on November eighth from seven a.m. to seven P. M. There is a a sample ballot is now posted on the city website. If you haven't received it yet, you want to look at what it is, or you you want to look at what it is anyway. So that's it.
Thanks. Are there any questions for Clerk Treasurer Dawes? Council Lozon?
Thank you. With regard to the opioid settlement, is there are we going to be doing any outreach to any recovery organizations?
I would imagine that that will be part of what we'll want to do, where where the the funds can be used for support of local organizations. I would imagine that we'd want to reach out to Turning Point and have them be part of the conversation. So, yeah, I mean, at this stage of the game, no plan has been adopted. We weren't sure when the money was going to start coming in. So.
Understood. And we would be looking to complete that, you know, complete our discussion in terms of any award.
Eighteen years.
No, I realize it lasts eighteen years, but but no, I mean, in all seriousness, there there are people in recovery who could use those funds now.
Yep.
To assist in their recovery. So, you know, at first thought, I'm willing to listen to everyone, but you know, at first thought, I'm thinking it would be the opportunity to support citizens in recovery. And that's what I you know, like I said, I'm certainly willing to listen to other ideas, but okay, super. So maybe a month or two before we
Yeah, I would I would say.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you.
John Lepage?
Most of you in the room know who I am, used to hold council seat here. And when Carol just mentioned reaching out to Turning Point in the context, this opioid money, I would just like to suggest that we also reach out to and be receptive to People's Health and Wellness Clinic, who also sees people with a lot of crisis issues and very familiar with their very good work. They are very needy in terms of funding. And they do a lot of service. I used to be on the board of directors and I've relied on them for my own use for many years. And they're a very worthy organization to include in this. So stay on that one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Page.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Clerk Treasurer Dawes? Sir Holman? Oh, okay. Seeing and hearing none, that takes us to the Liquor Control Board. Do we have any liquor control?
Nothing.
Hearing and seeing none, that takes us to the Cannabis Control Board. Are there any licenses yet?
No, not yet.
And number eight, City Managers Report.
Thank you, Mayor. First off, send a notice to council. Today, we are going to have a winter preparedness roundtable next Tuesday, over eleventh, and this is to hear about preparations available services and gaps in services for individuals. Hearing, seeing homelessness and housing fragility. So as as we get into the winter, we're to look at to understand those. Did we have both home superior counterparts, service providers, faith organizations? We'll have our police department there and fire department present as well. So want to welcome interested persons to attend. It's Tuesday, six o'clock at Alumni Hall. We will have a Zoom option and there'll be recording available for those who can't make it. So just want to let folks know and of course, welcome as many councillors as can join us. Bull Trash Day started with the town last Saturday. Just reminder on that continues through November fifth. Want to let council know we've posted the Fire Chief position on our website. So that has been active now for about a week. And the task now will turn to, you know, seeing what candidates we come in, I'm going to start thinking about the process for the candidate screening, which, as I mentioned, the council will mirror the the process used for Chief Vale, Chief Vale's hiring. And then just a lot this week, this past week with staff, just a lot of work on the FY twenty-four budget. And really want to thank the staff for, you know, we heard you at the presentation, we heard the council's direction and we work really hard, every department to work on a on a budget that's reflective of that. It's very difficult decisions, but we are very confident that we'll show you something that reflects what we think is is doable. So very excited about the the process we went through. And the the next step of that will be on our meeting on the eighteenth, when we'll start the the individual department reviews, which myself and Clerk Dawes and Finance Director Don will go first. And so we'll present that. And we'll also give you a higher level update again, similar to the first conversation we had, but reflective of some of the broader changes that we're proposing so that you're aware of those as we get deeper into the process. Held two staff town halls this week with the staff at the Civic Center and City Hall. So I want to thank the staff. It was really great conversations. Really, as I've mentioned, it's really nice to work at a organization where you can know everyone by name and haven't gotten there yet, but meeting more of them day by day. The DPW facility has been rescheduled for October twentieth, so excited to meet those crews as well. But, you know, just heard similar challenges that the department heads have shared and that I know you are familiar with this, which is we challenges of not being fully staffed are certainly trickling down to the folks on the front lines and a lot of also, you know, the the issues about succession planning and people who are towards the end of their careers who do care about the jobs they do and worried that who's going to sort of take over for them. And so just a a big challenge to confront, but really, really enjoyed the time with the staff, getting to know them and understand their challenges and and the things they like about working for the city. And then just want to thank Stephanie held a meeting last night at the Garfield Program, which I understand Council Dearing and Stockwell were able to join. So thank you for that. As I mentioned, we're, you know, we'll do better on the communication side, but it was a structure that wasn't safe. And I understand it was a positive conversation with the committee. So thank you for with the community. So thank you for that. And just another note, just continuing to meet city partners this week. You know, had a chance to meet Jeannie from the Berry City Justice Center, understand the great work they're doing. I know Chief Vale has mentioned to me some of the some of the partnerships they have with the police department with the restorative justice work they do. And so it's great to hear about them, their history here in the city. Have a visit to Capstone tomorrow, which I'm also very excited about. So just really looking forward, you know, very excited to meet more of the partners. And I know there's many others that are on my plate, but really excited about those two that the one that happened and the one that's on tap. So.
That's all. Looks it sounded like Carol might have one correction.
You had mentioned bulk trash has started. It's actually yard.
Yard waste. I'm so sorry.
Want to make sure the public knows that it's the yard waste drop off in the town. It has started and the schedule is posted on.
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
And thanks so much for taking a proactive approach to people experiencing homelessness this winter. Looks like that's going to be a great meeting. Any other questions for the city manager?
No, just a just a comment. I I appreciate the way you handled the inadvertent, well, it was inadvertent dismantling of the playground, but you owned it. So thank you for that. I just wanted to take notice of that and thank you for doing it.
Appreciate it.
Hearing and seeing no other questions, that takes us to unfinished business of which there is none. So that takes us to item ten, new business. We have two items under new business, discussion of potential changes to the animal and foul ordinance and presentation of the draft capital improvement plan. And we'll kick it off with the discussion of potential changes to the animal foul ordinance with Councilor Booton.
Yeah, so as you guys know, we discontinued the Dog Park Committee. That that was in our ordinance that needs to go. And we had some made some changes changes about the cemetery. And looking at state statute, it looks like that authority is actually vested in a cemetery commission, which, as we know, we do not have. And I was thinking that it would probably be a good idea after hearing some comments from the Cemetery Committee to vest that authority in them. So the question for city councils, if you're interested in going down that road, then let me know. If not, then I'm just not going to touch this.
Council Waszczak.
To clarify and just make sure I'm following what you're asking for. So the the change would be to basically put governance of dogs in the cemetery in the hands of the Cemetery Committee.
Correct. It would be like the cow pasture committee. If nobody has any problems, I don't have a problem moving forward. I will say this, not interested in touching anything else in this. And at all.
Do you promise?
I vehemently am opposed to touching anything else in this ordinance. I will touch. Oh, yes, I you know, I will. There's nothing else I want to touch in this ordinance at all. I barely want to touch this. Uh-oh.
For to those.
Um, I just to to give a little bit of history to to people who might not be aware. In two thousand and twelve, the we put a charter change in front of the voters to to essentially absorb the cemetery and the Cemetery Commission into the general fund. And that passed that Trump's statute, which is why our our Cemetery Committee does not have the authority, they wouldn't have the authority as is laid out in statute that is vested in a Cemetery Commission. And I'm a little concerned that that perhaps this is setting some kind of a precedent for committees. I believe that the what the cow pasture committee has done is essentially upheld what is already in our statute that says the dogs must be on leashes. So there they haven't imposed anything new with regards to the rules for the cow pasture.
Oh, I thought dogs were allowed to be loose on the cow pasture.
That I'm aware of.
Hmm.
My take is that I'd be a little concerned about the devilish devolution of ordinance authority to a committee. Given that ordinance authorities, the responsibility of council, there's a clear process for how the rules get established. It's really transparent, has to go through publication, hearing process. And it also starts to get really become a patchwork of a law. When we start to have one rule for one place and a different rule for other places. And perhaps that makes sense and could still happen within the ordinance in some cases, but I think my take is that I'd rather that the Cemetery Committee, if they would like to make a recommendation or amend the ordinance to come to council with that recommendation.
Well, I mean, I'll tell you that the Cemetery Committee does not want dogs in the cemetery. So that would be my if council's okay with that, then I will modify that section alone and make it so that they're not allowed in there. Council's not, I'm not going to go any further than this.
And and just to be clear, currently that they're not, dogs are not allowed within twenty feet.
Correct.
In the cemetery is correct, which pretty much bars dogs in most places in the cemeteries.
It does in some places.
I don't know if staff can speak to, but how many how many tickets have been issued in the cemetery for people in noncompliance with the ordinance right now?
There's there are the ones. And then probably because the police don't patrol the cemeteries.
Would that change if the ordinance changed?
Probably not. I can't speak for how the chief runs his department.
Oh, Council Lozon.
Thank you, Mayor. Is 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 it a big issue in the cemeteries? Is, is, i- is it a big issue in the cemeteries? Folks.
Huge issue, um, but there's bad instances where people. They let their dogs roam around.
Jeff, 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 do you mind coming to the microphone, please? For the folks at home.
That, yeah.
Well, you can do a little public service announcement as well.
So it's, it's not, it's not a huge issue. Uh, there are instances where people. They just, they won't listen, you know, and Donnie is. I wonder if you guys all know Donnie up at the cemetery. Donnie is Donnie. And Donnie is usually pretty forceful about letting people know. They shouldn't park on the grass. Their dogs shouldn't be running loose. They shouldn't have their dogs near a monument. If a dog. Defecates or urinates on a monument, that's, that's going to be cleaned at somebody's cost. I think Donnie will, if, if a cruiser comes by the, they'll, they'll make a swing through once in a while and Donnie will tell them that someone was in here with a dog. But there's nothing they can do after they're gone. It's just, it's in, it's in the rules and regulations that when people buy a lot, they get a booklet. And we have them up at the office if anybody ever stopped in and wanted a copy. And it is, it is in the rules and regulations of the cemetery. Pets shall not be allowed in the cemetery grounds or any building unless it is considered a service animal. So we just feel, you know, the cemetery's a little different than. You know, regular park, courier park, city hall park. It's, it's. It's all, it's a resting place for someone's loved ones. And we get a lot of tour buses through there. People take it, it, it's, you know, I, I know I've said this before. It's more than a cemetery. It's, it's a museum. It's probably one of the biggest art museums in the state of Vermont. So. We take it, we take it to heart that, you know, we feel it should be treated as sacred ground.
Yeah. Counselor Shumbeil and then Stockwell.
Go ahead.
Why is there a need to change what exists?
Well, we do have to change the, uh, dog, dog park committee. So that's not. Doesn't exist anymore. So we would be fixing that. And at the same time, I would say just.
It, it's actually in the ordinance. Yeah, the dog park.
Yeah.
Although that doesn't address the cemetery. I mean. It's conflicting, um. Sort of interests in terms of what you've said about. What's in your book when people come and file. I was going to say a lot, but that's not the word. But anyway.
It's.
Why do we want to change it?
Uh, the reason why is one, the cemetery committee wanted to. Make it so that it matches the regulations and, um. I mean, they had a resounding. Answer to that when I went to the committee.
Which was no.
Correct.
Okay. I'm good with no.
I'm just wondering, is it really enforceable? I know people who do walk their dogs in the cemeteries and they talk about it. And they don't seem to have a sense that they're not supposed to walk their dogs in the cemetery.
There are, there are signs at the entrances to all our cemeteries.
I mean, maybe it's not, maybe it's not an issue in terms of enforcement. But it seems like it would be something that if we're really going to do it, then we'd want some enforcement. No?
I'm of the same thinking of Counselor Stockwell. It seems like we have ordinance provisions that are not being followed now. A change in ordinance provisions isn't going to change anybody's behavior. Sanctions change people's behavior. And, uh, and, and it sounds like, it sounds like the police. Power of the city needs to be vested in somebody who can write a ticket. Uh, so that it's more than just asking somebody over and over again. Not to do something that they shouldn't be doing, that there's some form of a, a consequence. And I know, having lived near Elmwood Cemetery and walking dealing in there. Every single time I was in there, I saw somebody walking a dog. I often would gently remind people and some people are, you know, kind about it and some people are not so kind about it. Um, but it seems like a change in ordinance isn't going to solve this problem. Ticketing authority is probably what's going to solve this problem. Counselor during.
So, uh, maybe we just, uh, invest in some, uh, authority for people that are patrolling the cemetery to kick them out. And in no trespass them and say, hey, you know, you walked your dog in here, uh, you're not supposed to. And instead of giving you a ticket that costs you money, uh, we're going to deprive you of, uh, deprive you from being here. Then it's just another avenue, just trying to throw out something that's not said yet. I don't want to deprive anyone from being in the cemetery, but if they can't follow the rules, then maybe they shouldn't be allowed in the cemetery.
Counselor was.
Um, so I have. You know, last time we discussed this at council, I said I was relatively indifferent and I still maintain. Relative indifference to whether or not we allow dogs. My inclination is just to. Listen to what the cemetery committee has to say. They're the ones who govern the cemetery. Well, not govern, but you know what I mean? Who, who look over the cemeteries. So I'm inclined just to follow their recommendation. But I do, I will say I have. You know, uh, there's a staffing shortage everywhere. We have a staffing shortage here. The employees that we do have, whether it's building and grounds or the PD are very overworked. I have no interest in investing city money in form of staff time, uh, for. Anybody, whether it be the actual PD or whether it be Donnie, uh, to be the dog police. I just don't think that's, I'm, I'm not thinking.
Okay, I, I wasn't saying that.
I'm not saying you are, but we started talking about enforcement, making sure folks are patrolling. The cemetery to make sure no one's walking their dog. I just don't think that's the best use of city resources.
Thank you. Um, yeah, what I'd like is just a, a clear recommendation. Uh, from the cemetery commission in terms of path forward. So that the council has something to consider. I mean, I struggle a little bit. I, I, I guess you can. Obviously, if someone has a service animal, you, they're allowed in cemeteries as well as, uh. You know, public buildings and I sort of struggle with this. You know, rules of the cemetery. That are inconsistent with ordinance. So that's, so either way, we just got to, you know, clear it up. And it, you know, and it's just unfortunate, Jeff, that. You know, you, you watch most people. Walk their dogs and, you know, people love walking their dogs on Nelson Street. And dogs are going to do what dogs are going to do, you know. Across the board, people are so respectful. They clean up after their dogs. So. You like seeing them, you know, take their animal on a walk and exercise them. And it, it, it's just really a shame that some people. Yeah, I, I don't even get it. Yeah. Make me constable. I'll go for a walk.
Or not.
Mr. Tober.
Yes, uh, I make a. Come over here for a minute. Just a suggestion that. Couple of things that you might be able to do. One, if Donnie is at the cemetery most of the time. Could he be giving deputy deputized to allow him to write tickets? To people who are walking their dogs. And the second thing is if we. Make it. Clear to the, to the entire public that dogs are not allowed in the cemetery. Maybe we will get good citizens to start. Recording with their phones. And then providing that information to the police.
Thank you for your comments. Heather, uh. I don't have your last name, but if you could introduce yourself.
Hi, everybody. It's Heather Popino. I was vice chair of the Animal Info Task Force. That, uh, just finished up its worth, work last October. Um, and I believe that, um, new ordinance was passed last December. Um, I just want to be clear that what, what, uh, Counselor Bolton is suggesting is to take the word dog park out of. Let me just flip over here. It's section three sixteen F. In the ordinance that says exceptions. Dogs may be off leash in a dog park and in the cow pasture in accordance with rules set forth by the dog park and cow pastors committee. In that section right above it, it just says dogs shall not be permitted in a cemetery within twenty foot radius. I think what he's suggesting is just to take the words dog park out of F. Um, because that committee doesn't exist anymore so that. Um, you know, dogs can be off leash in terms of rules of the cow pasture committee alone. Uh, it, it doesn't say that a cemetery is a dog park. Nor that the cemetery committee needs to be involved at all. For decisions about whether dogs should be on or off leash in the cow pasture. And if the cow pasture committee has said no to that, then that answers that question. But, um, in terms of the cemetery. I don't think anything needs to get changed within that ordinance if. It's a not much of a problem. Um, and. Uh, you know, it's clearly says in the ordinance that you can't be within twenty foot feet. I live very close to Hope Cemetery and. There's a monument every five feet. So pretty much you can't be on the, you can't have a dog in the cemetery. End of discussion there. So, you know, back to what the proposal here is in terms of this, this discussion. If you just strike the word dog part from F, that solves the problem.
Thank you for your comments. So it sounds like council has a lot of, lot of different, uh, differing ideas about, uh, how to, how to approach this, but. General consensus that, uh, would like a recommendation from the cemetery commission on what ordinance changes. They want to see and, uh, and, and potentially a path for, um, how to, um, how to make it work. Uh, make sure the law actually has effect.
So in the email that I sent to everyone on September twentieth, it clearly states that the cemetery committee does not want dogs in the cemetery. It was a unanimous vote of their. Of their committee. And that's the reason why. It's here. But if the council doesn't want to take it up, I don't have a problem not doing anything with it. And just leaving it alone.
It seems to me practically speaking, they're already not permitted in the cemetery.
And there's all, and there's non-compliance. So, uh, that comes back, brings us full circle. We have an ordinance that disallows this. There's non-compliance. A change in ordinance isn't going to change non-compliance.
There are sections of the cemeteries that have space for dogs. Which are, are space that would. Fall in line with that, that particular section and they can walk it in the cemetery. So I.
Like the sliding hill on Elmwood Cemetery. So if you had your dog on a leash there and we're sludding. The cemetery commission doesn't want that to happen.
Well, so in Hope Cemetery on the Berry Town side of Hope Cemetery. Where there's no grave sites there and there are places.
I still, still think it'd be helpful to have a markup language from the cemetery commission. I don't know if that with the, with the kind of detailed recommendation.
Well, pets shall not be allowed in the cemetery grounds or any building unless it's a service animal is what the recommendation is. But.
Is, is the chair of the cemetery commission here tonight?
No, it's not.
Okay.
But Mrs. Galander is, and she is on the cemetery committee. And she fully wants this. Along with everybody else in the committee.
Always like to speak for yourself.
And staff. And just as a side note, we, in the past, we haven't had. It was a, it was a exception that we made last year. My exception, which now I regret.
Eileen Galander, I'm a Berry Town resident, but I'm a member of the cemetery committee. And we feel, I'm also the tour guide at Hope Cemetery. And I keep thinking of our place as an outdoor art museum. And there are. Lots and lots of people who come from all over the world that visit this place with awe. And they, they absolutely are amazed at the beauty. And the thought of having poop on the ground next to a Babusa monument. Is just repulsive and that definitely could happen. And, um, Heather is correct. People don't measure how far they are from a stone and it, there is a stone every five feet. So basically they are not allowed in our art museum. They should be outside on the. Open grass in the front where they never are. Nobody's out there but the crows. So, uh, I, the cemetery commit, I mean, we're trying to keep this a sacred place. And, and a place where people will want to come and visit. And. And we want it respectful. We want it beautiful and it takes a lot of work to keep it. The weeds down and everything just looking perfectly. And we want to keep it that way. Um, it's something to be very, very proud of for our community. And we don't want anything to ruin it. So we, the commission, the committee has definitely talked about this a lot and we just feel that. There should be no dogs allowed because people don't measure and the dogs do walk right up. I mean, a leash is sixteen feet long. And that's past the stones. Um, and they just shouldn't be there. I mean, if you were in Arlington, you wouldn't see dogs in Arlington. I mean, not that ours can be compared to Arlington, a different place, but even the Vermont Veterans Cemetery, there are no dogs. At all. So I think we, we should follow that. Thank you.
I just want to, Heather has her hand up again, and I think I accidentally put her hand down for her when that's not what she meant. So I just wanted to. Recognize Heather and apologize for inadvertently putting your hand down.
Heather.
Hi, this is Romney, uh, Heather's partner. So, uh, actually Arlington does allow dogs. We, we went to, uh, my uncle's funeral with our dog. But, um, uh, so, but the other point is that actually the Hope Cemetery already has signs that says no dogs allowed. I mean. That's about as plain as you can get. And adding, changing any of this is not going to affect. Uh, compliance is not going to, people have to pass that sign with their dog. To go into Hope Cemetery. That's already said there doesn't, the sign does not say twenty feet from a monument. It says no dogs allowed in Hope Cemetery. So the compliance issue is a problem. Um, and the compliant, that, that issue isn't going to be, people who ignore the signs and don't pick up their dogs poop are also not. The people that are not going to pay attention to the signs either. It's the people that are respectful and don't let their dogs near the monuments. Um, uh, are, are the ones that are conscientious enough to pick up after the dog's poop. So the people that you see laying stuff around. Are also not going to pay attention to any kind of sign you put up there. And it's unfortunate. And people who litter all over the cemetery are also not going to pay attention to being considered either. So I just wanted to point that out. That you, you're, you're trying to make changes to something that's going to be really difficult to enforce.
Thank you, Romney. Counselor Booton.
So it gets to the other issue, which is the sign is there. And the ordinance doesn't allow for the sign to be there because the signs I think are outside. The area, correct? So it says the entire cemetery is off limits.
Now, the. The signs are at the entrance. There's, um. Down at the lower entrance at Hope, and I think there's one at the main entrance and there's an entrance at Elmwood too. And Elmwood, which I consider, I like Elmwood just as much, if not more than Hope, because Elmwood's an older cemetery. If you go walk through and look at some of the monuments there, just imagine those, those big monoliths being set. Back in the eighteen hundreds with no equipment, you know, just block and tackle and horses. Those monuments are even closer than Hope. Um, you walk those back roads, the dirt roads around there. You're, you're well within twenty feet of those. And, and I don't personally, I've always felt the people that walk the dogs in Elmwood, I know some of them. And they do pick up after their dogs. It's, it's the few that don't. And to let them get up against a monument is just, it's just not right. I will bring it up again. The next cemetery committee meeting is Monday, October seventeenth. I will bring it up again. The next cemetery committee meeting is Monday, October seventeenth. And I'll ask them how they want to proceed. If you want something more in depth from them. I can ask them to write something.
Okay. I think I'm good. Uh, I mean, the issue is the mayor pointed out is enforcement. So that's really, you know, I, I don't think we really need anything in our ordinance. I mean, I, I. Hear what you said and, and I hear what you're saying. Um, and I think the ordinance is fine. It says they can't be within twenty feet of a monument. Which practically speaking would put them at the old entrance to Hope. And they could get up as far as the cemetery proper and then they have to turn around and go back or, or put them. You know, roughly fifty feet beyond the gates of the newer Hope entrance. Uh, you know, same with Elmwood. You, you could go what seventy-five feet beyond the, the main entrance and then you're. You know, there's no way to avoid the monuments, but, but there are still. Plenty of places to walk your dog, uh, in pla-, and it's spacious. It's not like it's a, you know. Still plenty of grass to walk your dog on. Um, so I don't know the ordinance needs anything, but I think. Maybe it would be helpful to ask a representative of the police department to attend. Your cemetery commission meeting so that, you know, we can come up, you know, giving deputizing Donnie. I love you, Donnie, but you ain't being a deputy. It ain't happening, man. Any more than I'm going to be a constable, okay? You know, um, but obviously we've got to figure out. The enforcement, as the mayor said, there's nothing wrong with what's here and that's the conclusion I'm quickly coming to. It's. It's that we have people who don't care.
It's funny, Tom, because I got a text from Rick Taft about the Donnie deputy thing and he said, no, never.
All those in favor of not deputizing Donnie, please. We love you, Donnie. We do.
You're, you're, Donnie is incredibly helpful and respectful every time someone has laid a request in Hope.
Takes a lot of pride in those.
Takes an incredible amount of pride, but so I think that's really what we need is we just need some sort of narrative from the. Cemetery commission about enforcement, not about, you know, a little path forward, a little help here, but I think the ordinance is fine.
And this is the reason why I wanted to discussion because I didn't want to warn it.
So, uh, if there's no objection from the manager and, uh, the staff to the committee thinks it's a good approach forward and there's no objection from council.
Let's get your hand up.
All right. And I see, uh, hand up with Bern Rose, Bernadette.
Hi, thanks. Um, I can't see myself right now, so. Um. I'm a little confused. Okay, good. I'm a little confused because I think. Uh, Counselor Booton, I think you were originally asking to just remove the two words. Dog park from the ordinance. And somehow the cemetery, uh, discussion came into that also. And so are you asking for a motion to remove that language from the ordinance?
I'm not sure where that information came from, but, uh, the email that I sent was, uh, modifying that section, but. Based on the conversation tonight, that's not going to happen and I am not going to bring it forward any further. So. But strange that that's a narrative. I don't know where that came from. So.
All right. So it sounds like we have a path forward. To move ahead and, uh, look back to potential solutions with the, uh, staff and the cemetery committee. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right. So that takes us to the presentation of the draft capital improvement plan, manager.
Thanks, Mayor.
Yep. I'm gonna ask Grant Gager to come up, um, to join us at the desk and the council was, Zach, there's a. Powerpoint on the laptop saved on the desktop. The CIP. And. That, uh, Grant will, will go over. Well, Council was, Zach, looks for that. I'll just, uh, I'm going to turn over to Grant here very quickly, but I just want a few quick comments here at the top. Started engaging with Grant. Um, Grant was, uh, here July nineteenth, my second day on the job. Um, and we started at that point a process with every department head of going, trying to get what existed in. Various plans in various offices, sometimes in people's heads. Um, into one place, a, a capital improvement plan. Um, and I think we have a really solid first draft, um, that, um. Has actually been a really good management tool for me already. Um, and I'm very excited of what the final product will look like. Now, I, I wanna again emphasize this is, this is a draft and we've started, uh, we've had Grant here. Uh, meeting with some department heads and he was at our department head meeting this morning and even today we're, we're finding things that were changing and that are updating and the amounts are. Are moving and, um, and, and so I want to emphasize like this is a really strong starting draft, but it is still draft and we're going to start. Um, uh, pouring through it and getting it to its, its, its best form. Um, because I think it will be a, a really incredible tool for us once it is there. Um, just as an example, and I know Bill's here, you'll notice the DPW garage is not here and that is obviously a huge. Capital Improvement Plan need. But we had a really, I think, good conversation about where that stood. We understand the council's position on the cost that we. Expected at the time. We know that that's not possible, uh, and didn't feel it was. Appropriate or responsible to just pluck a number and drop it in here. So I just thought that it was better to, you know, just be upfront. Like we know that there's things missing like the DPW garage. Um, that will need to fit into this plan at some point. Um, so I will turn it over to Grant. Um, now he, uh, will cover process and content. Um, and looking forward to our conversation afterwards, so.
Excellent. Thank you, Mayor and, and members of the council. Thank you for having me. My name, as the city manager said, is Grant Gager and I'm with Public Advisory Group. We are a little bit about us. Uh, we're headquartered in Ketchum, Idaho, and we were started by, uh, former municipal officials like yourself. Uh, and, and like your staff members here as well, and. We work with municipalities, uh, uh, across the country and with a specialty in, uh, financial analysis and, and really capital planning. Is, is my personal professional background, uh, came into government about sixteen years ago with, uh, the MTA in New York. Uh, working on, on large mass transit projects there and, uh, moved into city government, uh, about seven years ago. And, uh, and, and have had the opportunity over the last several years to work with a number of communities like yours and. Um, if you wouldn't mind, the next slide would be great. Uh, you know, I, I kind of, what we'll do tonight is kind of talk about the CIPs in general. And, and a little bit of the process that we followed here and, and then I'm sure that, that you folks had the opportunity to. To read through all seventy-seven or so pages of the report and, and, but we'll break it down, uh, just really into the executive summary, the two-year work plan. Um, both for you folks and, and those watching at home. And, and then I'd like to talk about probably some of the next steps for, for you folks as a city. Um, because, uh, you know, as, as the city manager mentioned, and, and as all of you know, you are in a, in a fantastic position. Uh, over the next several years and that you actually have some funding available and, and get to, uh, execute on some projects and, and with the. The new local option tax that, that I understand you folks have adopted. Um, I, I, I think, you know, you, you've got a good foundation to build on in the coming years and. And hopefully this document, uh, really serves as a bit of a catalyst for you. And, and, but I, I will clarify, it's, it's not just this document. There is a, a, a large database that underpins this document that. Um, that, uh, the, the city manager, finance director a- and I have been, uh, working with throughout the project. And, and I think will be a useful tool to, to guide some of your efforts over the coming years. So. Uh, if you wouldn't mind, uh, just, you know, to, to get everybody up, up to speed. The capital improvement plans generally include all, all projects and, and large, uh, equipment acquisitions. And, and it varies from city to city, but I understand you folks have a five thousand dollar, uh, capital, uh, threshold for, for equipment. And that's very common actually throughout the industry. And so, uh, you'll notice that, that section three include of the report. Includes all of the projects and section four includes your vehicle and trailer, uh, and, and also some of your, your DPW type of, of, of equipment. And the current industry practice really is to plan out over a five-year period. And, and, and that's what, what, what this document in- includes, although we do go beyond that five-year, uh, time horizon on some of your larger. Um, projects and some of your more ongoing initiatives there. Um, so we do kind of look past that window for you folks and. And really as the, the, the manager, uh, noted, CIPs are, are living documents. This is draft one. And, and we will refine it over the, the coming weeks. But the CIPs really are something that you folks should incorporate into the budget process as, as you are this year. And, and revisit them every year and, and make sure that, that there aren't any new projects that may need to come up. Based on, you know, opportunities or, or situations that have arisen. And, and also, uh, to take the opportunity each year during the budget cycle, just to, to see if there's anything that perhaps is, is no longer germane. Uh, or useful to the city. Um, and, and so, uh, you, you know, we, we somewhat joke that, that the document is good for, you know, one day or one week only. Because if, if things change, you know, a cost estimate, for instance, or, or new information or. Um, you know, frankly, you just have an emergency that necessitates some work down the road, you know, right? If things will pop up and. Uh, and, you know, it's, it really is good practice, like I said, to implement into, into your budgeting process annually. Uh, and, and that's why Vermont statutes, uh, encourage the adoption of a, of a CIP. And actually I understand that your charter. Uh, now, now includes some, some CIP language as well, which is, is fantastic planning, uh, for all of you folks. So. Um, the, the process as, uh, as the manager, um, hit on earlier, the process that we followed with the city. I was here. Uh, in, in mid-July and, and we did interviews with all the department heads. Um, because we recognize that some of the projects of the city have been documented through the municipal plan or. The, the stormwater mitigation plan, uh, and, and then there's a great number of projects that, that exist. Uh, in other documents, um, that staff had at their various department levels. And, and then a number that also, uh, just exists in people's heads. And, and so to combine all those data sources into one. Uh, we sat through a few days in meetings and, and just talked about everybody's different department. And, and, uh, came back with the draft and, and over the last two days or so, I've had the opportunity to, uh, to. You know, reconnect with some of the department heads on some outstanding items and, and will continue to do that virtually over the, the coming week or two. Um, and, and try to, to really drill this thing down. And so, uh, Maestro, if you wouldn't mind. The, um, so that, that is a little bit of background on, on CIPs and, and our process here. And so. The, uh, the executive summary, uh, as I noted, includes a, a two-year work plan and, and we really. Came up with that two-year window a little bit because it's tied to some of your funding mechanisms, uh, in, including the, the ARPA, uh, funding. And, and also, uh, the, the city of Berry has a, uh. A large universe of projects, uh, before it and, and has a wonderful opportunity to really transform the city. Um, within the, the CIP, I believe there's, you know, uh, approximately a hundred and ninety or so total projects. And so. Uh, it, it is, it is like I said, a large opportunity set. And so we wanted to focus staff's effort. Um, and, and the city really over the next two years on, on a certain path of projects and. Uh, if you wouldn't mind, we can, um, we can jump into it. It, the, some of the, the structuring. Um, of, of why the projects are, are included in the two-year work plan. Um, some are, are there really to ensure state of good repair. Uh, there's, there are certainly some opportunities to, to work with some of the infrastructure. And then, uh, you know, also to, to have a, a community impact. We've, we've included a number of, of parks projects. And, uh, and other projects that, that, that seem like, um, they are, uh, going to be necessary and, and positive for the community. Um, and then the two-year work plan also, uh, includes some planning initiatives and studies that will help. Uh, lay the groundwork for some of your future projects and programs. Um, you know, Rome, Rome wasn't built in a day and, uh, and the city of Berry. Um, was not either. And, and so it's, it's prudent to plan the work and, and that's. Why we have phased the, the work the, the way we could. Um, you know, certainly we recognize that, that there are, uh, a number of needs. Um, and, and there was some discussion amongst the staff here and amongst our team. Back in the office and, and there, there really is a need to phase some of the work. You know, for example, there's. Probably four, uh, buildings in the city that, that require some sort of HVAC work, right? And. And, and that really is what a, a lot of, uh, people, employees and, and visitors feel on a day-to-day basis is, is the HVAC. Um, and while we may have liked to have, have scheduled all the HVAC work in year one. Um, from a project delivery standpoint, that might not necessarily be feasible. And so we do have some of those. Um, higher priority projects phased out over, you know, the, the second and third year as well. And so, um, without further ado, we can jump into a, a, a bit of the summary. And this is a, a high-level summary. Um, but it, it really, uh, lays out kind of the, the next two years of work. And, and you can see here that there's, uh, including projects and vehicles. About three point two million of, of work, uh, scheduled for twenty twenty-four. And in the, the funding sources down here, we've, uh, identified two point eight million, although. You'll notice we have a, you know, while that's a shortage of, you know, almost four hundred thousand there. Uh, we, we've got a surplus in year two and, and so recognizing that, that some of those dollars can be pulled forward into year two. Um, you know, don't be, don't be too. Put off by that. And, and then also I would, uh, I, I've been working with the, the city manager and the finance director. Uh, you, you'll notice there's some, some larger dollars, uh, in vehicles for, for fire and, and public works and. Uh, a great many cities, uh, in this day and age are moving towards lease finance programs. And so the entire, uh, outlay does not occur in year one. And so. Um, the, i- if the city looks to explore those types of arrangements, you know, any funding gap that, that may be apparent here. Really doesn't exist, um, due to some of those other mechanisms that, that aren't necessarily shown here because they are new to the city and we're still working through them at a staff level. And so, um, you know, a- as I said, the, the city has a, a, a large and fantastic opportunity set of projects. And so. Uh, we're, we're trying to, to make a serious push at, at some of those over the first two years of the work plan. And, uh, and, and now I will run briefly through the, the projects. You know, and, and give you folks a sense of, of rea- what really is included in, in this first two years, right? And I, I will also point out this, uh. This section focuses on the general fund and so the enterprise funds, water and wastewater are, are separate from this analysis. Uh, they are included in the report, all the projects, but just because the funding mechanisms are slightly different. Uh, nonetheless, so, uh, you know, in, in kind of the, the planning and, and community development world. There are, uh, some, some studies, uh, related to housing, uh, initiatives. Um, and, and a lot of these actually all come from the municipal plan, right? There's, there's a discussion of a, a study. Uh, related to upper floors housing and, or housing on upper floors in the downtown. And so, you know, please know, these are. Short project descriptions and titles. Uh, section four of the report includes significantly more information background on. On each of these projects here that are really reduced to just a, a short descriptor. And so. Um, and so you'll see we've got, uh, a, a number of housing initiatives and, and these are really. Um, you know, the, the rental property purchase pilot program, the second item there, you know, certainly we recognize that. Uh, ten thousand dollars is, is not enough to help anybody purchase a rental property or, or maintain a rental property. This really is to study that program and, and establish the framework that that program would operate under. And. And so, um, you know, similarly, we've got a number of, of mobility improvements. And, and so in, in the first year, uh, it starts out with a, a few studies, um, on bus stop density and pedestrian. Uh, environment quality and, and those studies again will inform future work, uh, in, in subsequent years. And, and similarly, uh, there is a, a decent, uh, chunk of the, of the municipal plan. Dedicated to, to bike paths. And, and so, uh, we're starting that, that study process here. Uh, you know, we, we don't get much of a bike path for, uh, for twenty-five thousand dollars. And so this, like I said, is, is more of the, the planning and, and some of the design work. Uh, to, to get those initiatives kicked off. And, uh, and similarly, there are, uh, several. Projects that fall more and studies that fall more into the strategic planning. This, this part of the document is a little bit planned heavy. Because it's more in that, in that realm. Um, if you wouldn't mind, we can. Uh, jump down to something that, that maybe is a little bit more, uh, more concrete and, and impactful to society and, and, and the community, which are. You know, the, the facilities of, of the city, right? And so. There are a, a number of projects, uh. And so there are a a number of projects planned for the auditorium and and alumni hall. Including, you know, one of the first ones out of out of the gate there is an assessment of the electrical system. At at the facility, there, there are some concerns or or thoughts about the the quality of of that electrical system. And so before the HVAC upgrades, which are planned, I believe, for that building for twenty twenty-five, before they occur. And some of that other work occurs, we we felt it prudent to start with that assessment of of the the electrical system there. And and then, you know, moving down the line, this is more a high-level summary for this department. There are several upgrades at cemeteries that that includes some some new roofs at Elmwood. And then within City Hall here, HVAC, as I indicated, this is one of the buildings that. That that probably is is due for for some HVAC upgrades. And so we've got some work there and and then out at the parks, there are a a number of improvements. You know, specifically impacting rotary and and Garfield parks, a a new, you know, there's a a place structure there, I believe. And and then in the the public safety building, there's, there's been a a several upgrades that have been identified by the users of that building. That including also, you know, as I mentioned, HVAC is is an issue there. And so, you you know, in in total, you know, it's, it's about seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand for facilities work. In in the first, first year of the plan. And so it it will be a meaningful impact, you you know, both to your parks and to your city facilities. And 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 we've gone through the the project list with with Jeff. These are, you know, items that that he has had kicking around in his head and on paper for for a little while now, right? And so if you wouldn't mind, you know, in the fire department, as as you may know and and have experienced. It is a an equipment-heavy operation. And and so most of the the fire department's items within the CIP are actually falling to that equipment purchase. Area and and they they they've talked about the a need for some updated extrication equipment. And the the SCBA self-contained breathing apparatus that that they use in a in a fire situation. You know, also could 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 use some new, and and I believe that actually largely is related to the the cascade tank filling station. And and so those are, you know, kind of a flavor of some of the the fire department work. And on the next page, we start to add into into to Bill's area in in public works. And while the the city manager indicated that the the construction cost of of a new DPW facility is not included. In the in the the five-year CIP outlook, we have included some of one hundred and fifty thousand for some of that initial study work. And, you know, I I ideally, I this, I have a a good background in 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 constructing city facilities, right? And a good place to start is in a program and study that looks at, you know, what does staff need that building to do? And how do they need it to function? And then also some elements of site selection there, where would be an appropriate place to put that building. And so, you know, we envision that 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 initial one hundred and fifty thousand certainly would be enough to get the city very far along that process. Of of understanding, you know, what is the building, where are some possible locations, where are some conceptual design efforts? And and set you folks up to to pursue whatever means of funding you are going to pursue for that facility. It's, it's unlikely to be a small price tag is is my hunch from just. Understanding what the current facility is and 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 some of the needs of the department. And so this will hopefully start to inform that conversation for the community and and lead you folks down whatever path that is. I know, you know, certainly, a a bond election is is one opportunity. But I think this study, like I said, will help you folks really zero in on on what the project is and what the building needs to be. And if I'm not mistaken, that will bring us to streets. And, you know, similar to to facilities, there are a number of different projects that are. Included in CIP. And so, you know, we've got several different programs, mobility improvements. There's, there's a focus on sidewalk improvements and and also some some ADA-type crosswalk improvements. Within the the pavement improvement program, that that's pretty much your annual maintenance. Whether it's simply overlay or or it's a full, you know, roadway rehab. Those, those are your projects and and the appendix includes, you know, the the first several years of of kind of the identified work plan there. And and I'll I'll touch a little more on pavement later. And then similarly, just going down the list, you know, there's, there's a safety improvements throughout the right-of-way. That that Bill has identified with his team. And 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 same with the the stormwater system improvements. You know, you you folks have inherited, you know, probably several hundred years of of stormwater system infrastructure. That is in various states of 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 repair. And and so Bill and his team, certainly, you can tell by that that price tag there have have some ideas and and how to improve the system. So, you know, and then again, going down into strategic planning, kind of looking at, you know, the the road standards policy and the complete streets policy. You know, again, kind of helping set the stage for some some future work. And and then in structure improvements, you you know, you folks are are not unique in the state of Vermont in that you've got some some older bridges there. But, you know, the the good news from my understanding of of the state of Vermont is they are working through a large bridge, you know, overhaul program statewide. And so that sounds like there's, you know, very likely to be a some decent revenue opportunities, grant funding opportunities for you folks. As as you address some of those projects. And so I believe without, that will take us into the next steps. And and so, you know, the 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 next step, really, after after we complete this at a staff level and preparing for. Fiscal twenty-four and 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 doing this really is to implement the the CIP. And and so, you know, the there are, as I said, nearly two hundred projects included in the CIP. And 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 at three point two million dollars, it's really only close to closer to about one point nine. Million of of actual capital projects in fiscal twenty-four. As you look at that, there's going to be a workload associated with that. Capital projects don't deliver themselves. And so, you know, we heard earlier tonight that that staff, you know, is is busy running the business and operating the city. And so you as a council and you as a city may may wish to examine your project manic management capacity. And and perhaps you folks are very, in some ways, lucky to be close to the state capital. Where many state agencies are based and they use the third-party project managers. And so that may be an avenue for for you folks to at least deliver some of the more specialty projects out there. Supplementing your own staff. And and similar to that is is, you know, preparing the the procurement process. There, there are a number of studies and and there are a number of construction projects that are unlikely to be self-performed by the city. And so, you know, getting in in the mindset of of reconstruction season is nearing an end. And so we've got, you know, four or five months of of winter time to prepare ourselves for for springtime. And and that is a fantastic time to work on the the procurement documents, the request for proposals and invitation for bids and and set that up. And so when springtime hits and the weather is nice, you know, the the city is ready to go out and start that procurement process and get those contractors on board. You know, hopefully on board in in April or early May to get full use of the construction season. And, you know, with this and with the CIP in general, is a is a fantastic opportunity to examine some of the supporting technologies and related technologies that you have. And and one that that comes to mind to help prioritize some of the work. Because I'm sure a lot of you noticed, the larger dollars are in in streets and those public works type of 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 areas. And so. You you know, there are a number of technologies that and and companies that that do. You know, not only just work order management, but also do asphalt assessments and concrete assessments. And can help you folks prioritize the work and and understand what road segments maybe should be worked on. You you know, just based on level of service and and level of quality. And and so, you know, I think there's some opportunities there that could really make a difference for the city. And I'm 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 almost done here very quickly. The, you know, there, there are fantastic opportunities out there currently to to fund capital projects. And, you know, we talked briefly about the lease purchase, lease finance program for for vehicles. And and I'm going to work more with staff on that one. But then also, you know, the the grants and the loans that are available now, as you folks know, that was clearly was a a a large part of the funding puzzle here. And I think that will be true for for a number of years. We did not discuss very much tonight, the water and and wastewater areas. But you you know, I I think it's appropriate across the country for municipalities to review their water and sewer rates. To ensure that that the rate structure is allowing maintenance of of capital goods and and encouraging a state of good repair. Because water and wastewater facilities really are 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 key to every city. And and as we've seen nationwide, there's, there's always an opportunity there to to ensure that that infrastructure is is in a state of good repair. And then similarly, recognizing the the amount of work that that you folks have. I I think there's an opportunity to look at creating some capital project and equipment replacement funds. To ensure that 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 the money is available for some of those those larger projects that you have. And I think our last slide here is is really, like I said, this is a working document. And and so it is, it is key to to keep this thing moving, to to maintain and and update it. And and, you know, make sure that we're removing the the obsolete projects and the old projects. And and as community need and and desire arises, you know, bringing new projects into the CIP and and planning that work. And and so a- at this point, I'm I'm happy to stand for any questions you may have.
Thanks, Mayor. May I just, just a little bit of context? Thanks, Grant. I just want to add one thing that may be a question for councilor, so I'll just address now. Just on page three of the executive summary, the source of funds. The section at the bottom, I just want to be clear, this was, you know, we have some unspent bond funds. What we did is split the balance between two years. ARPA funding, again, we split the balance across two years, local option taxes reflects our estimates. And then the property tax application is based on projections of what's been happening in recent budgets and if it grows at those similar rates. So just want to make sure that that that's clear, that we are, you know, we're not tagging ARPA funding to any specific projects here. I'm not, we're not suggesting that, these are just estimates and and nothing more than a simple division equation. The the bonds, what I would just say is that we think most of those those unspent bonds would be, could be tagged to specific projects. We'd have to go through the exercise of making sure that those projects align with the original uses of those bonds. But we think we can, we can do that. Just wanted to be clear that this was, you know, really mostly an exercise in division, just to give the council and I, you know, a sense of, hey, this is a really ambitious and big list. But it's a little bit less scary when you look at the other, the bottom side of it, that there are some resources. I do also, and thank you, Grant, for bringing up the the project management capacity. You know, I I think certainly when I was talking to Jeff and Bill about this with with Grant, you know, we said if we waved a magic wand. Because they're, they're, you know, the bulk of the projects are in their worlds. We waved waved the magic wand and said, here's, here's the money, go do these lists, these projects from twenty-four and twenty-five. They're not doing them by themselves, right? And so and realistically, it's, they would be huge lifts in most circumstances. So just want to be very clear about that, that that there are lots of very big things here that that certainly we wouldn't be able to do without additional capacity. And even with additional capacity would would be a lift. So anyway, I just wanted to give that that context ahead of time, it might answer some of the questions. And thank you, Grant, for that presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. And while you're talking about the source of funding, I noticed there's no enterprise funds flagged in there, nor grant funds. But on the back end of this, are there project sheets for each of these projects that kind of flag potential grant funding sources? What the cycle is, what the max amounts are?
Yeah, so we, this was the general fund portion, that there's the, there's an enterprise, separate enterprise section of the report. But on the grants, this was, we we discussed how to represent that. And I think that the risk, right, is that they're not guaranteed. But they're obviously, we're obviously not going to tackle this without significant grant resources. And I know certainly in talking with Bill, it came up a lot with a lot of the damn work we have to do. Most of that would end up being grant-eligible, but we didn't think we should. Include sources of funds here unless they're in our bank account. But Mayor, you're absolutely right, this would not be anywhere near achievable without significant grant resources.
And I was just going to say, we reviewed this in the department head meeting this morning. And it was the first time that I had seen that there are bike path sections included. And so I hadn't mentioned when we were talking about possible funding sources, that we have a chunk of Semper Bond, the Quest money. Something north of three hundred thousand dollars that has been allocated for bike path work. That would be another source of revenue for, to cover that work and and other bike path work, so.
And so the four or three, that's the voter-approved streets line item?
Yes, correct, yes. And and that's just assuming, that's, that's an assumption we made, that it would grow at the rates it's grown in in past years.
And then the, and then one other source of fund is that there've been some general fund budget items for. I think for equipment, different equipment and different budget budgets is is.
Most of that has been transferred out to capital bond over the last couple of years.
Right, but that's, I think that's, that's one of the points Grant touched on that. Those have been good things to do. And so when we had to make this dispatch update, we had some money put away for that. And that was helpful, that that didn't hit us all at once. And so I think those are, we're, we're actually going to propose to you during the, I think, fire department, department review. Starting to put away some money for vehicle purchases that are coming. And so that when the time comes, it's not a matter of finding, you know, sixty, seventy thousand dollars. It's somewhere less of, less than that. And so those are good practices. I think the other thing we've talked a lot about is we're getting hit with a lot of things coming to end of useful life now. Like within a really short, narrow span of years. And we're going to do the best we can to address it, but we should, we need to get in a situation where. We're addressing those on a more sustainable cycle, right? There's, I can't tell you a number of times, you know, speaking, you know, well, this roof is failing at the same time as this other roof. Obviously, all our HVAC systems are coming to almost at the same time. So we're going to do the best we can and and it's not ideal, but it's, I think, using this as a management tool to get us out of those cycles where it's. It's just hitting that the same point will be, will be important.
Yeah, just a clarifying question. I I flagged three instances, specifically the money for the PD vehicles. The costs associated with the architect and design and search process for the DPW garage. And the north and stormwater wastewater upgrades. Do these costs, do the numbers presented here reflect the money already spent on some of these things? For example, we just bought six new PD vehicles. Is that, whatever, I think it was around sixty grand, is that reflected in here? So otherwise, is this new money or does this include money that we have spent on?
It'll depend on the, some of, I know we have some twenty-three things in here. Most of those are on cycles that I believe will be, Grant, if jumping, if you have it more handy.
Yes, but by and large, we looked at. Bill, do you have?
But the expert handle this one. I would like to address the some of the DPW side issues. For the record, I'm Bill Avrin, I'm the Director of Public Works for the city of Berry. So so I'll I'll speak first to the to the architectural services. This is not intended to reflect the money we have. So we've done initial programming, we've done some initial site selection. And the answer is, it's out of range, it's simply out of range. So how do we take what we know, finish that process? So how do we take what we know, finish that process, which is going to be focused on locations? And then cut this down to something that is, it's going to be a painful and difficult process. It will very likely mean taking DPW partially. I I don't, I'll frame it this way, it would be reorganizing DPW into different operating pairs. And so that's, that's going to be a difficult and complex process. As we do that, we're actually going to need the facilities planning for that. So we're the sewer department to be paired with the wastewater treatment plant instead of with the water department. The DPW facility gets smaller, but now I have work to do down at the wastewater plant in order to co-locate them. And so this envisions that we're actually taking what we know, adding both the resources. And the charge to the architect to change what we've done and to go to something that is. More within the financial capacity of of the city's residents.
And counsel, it was a, it was a mix. Some of them are reflected just because of, some of the ones we replaced are reflected because of the timing of when we were preparing this. And then many of the police vehicles are cruisers that are on a, they're heading on a rotating basis, yeah.
Is there capacity at the wastewater treatment to expand?
So there is land area and a garage that right now we store some equipment in. But we use it primarily for service where we could look at co-locating the sewer department. It does mean, for instance, the garage is about five feet too small to fit the new sewer vacuum truck. So there are fit up things that we just would have to deal with. The facility itself is going to change within the next ten or fifteen years. And it will physically become larger, but the city actually owns sufficient land area. That we could all fit there. There's room to the north to expand, as well as there's a corner on the on the. What I'll call the southeast corner, that right now we've turned into a gravel parking lot to hold equipment.
Thank you. May I just say to everyone, it's wonderful to see this. It's wonderful to have this plan. It's just such a monumental step forward. I was thrilled.
Yeah, it's not lost on me on the number one priorities when you add them all up except for. You know, really big ticket items that like the the streets and it comes up underneath the amount of money that we have on Arpa. You know, I think of one of the the items on there that's that's scheduled for twenty twenty four is the Garfield Park. Which, you know, we spent eighteen thousand dollars for warming shelter. When, you know, the Good Samaritan was open and we we had housing for the hotels. And it's fifty seven thousand dollars for the park. And I'm, I believe the two councillors from Ward Three were up there yesterday. I don't know, just throwing it out there as we probably should just like do that a lot quicker.
Just one point of clarification, the Good Sam was at capacity as were the hotels at the time.
How many people? No, nothing, nothing, nothing.
All right, well, I will also say, just so tremendously thrilled. I am by hitting this milestone. And I think, you know, we could spend as a council, a whole Saturday workshop, going through different and trying to understand the sheets. But and certainly there are some things I would question why they're, why they're there or or why they're prioritized in particular ways. But this is such, it's such a huge step forward, knowing kind of the big picture. Of what Steph sees as the 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 critical, critical next steps. And I think it, it's going to position us to unlock a lot of grant funding. It's going to position us potentially to align with the projects with the Regional Planning Commission. The State Transportation Improvement Program. And and really just start digging out of this, the 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 hole. That I think a lot of people experience as they look around the city, they recognize that we're behind on capital investments. And that we need to start getting ahead. I think one thing that would be helpful in kind of thinking about. How some of the projects learn the way they do is being able to see, you know, the a specific project in its phasing. And what's been done already in prior years, where it is, what phases now. And the potential funding, funding sources and and. Not just an amount, but this is what we envision coming from local option tax. This is maybe from the bond, this is from a potential grant funding source. And and seeing and seeing the links back to like section references back to the municipal plan. Or other prior plans that flag that, flag different projects. The other thing I'd wonder, I'm just curious about a little bit more was the method of prioritization. So certainly staff has its priorities and then also we as elected representatives of the people and the citizens. Of of the city may have slightly different priorities. And so what's going to be the process to reconcile some of those potential differences?
So I I I think this is step one, just having it is is, you know, the council knowing. What what the staff believes those needs are. So that I think having this to, you know, this is sort of the the opening position from from the administration. And and I think that the next piece is is really understanding our funding sources. I think we're we're going to go through and we're going to kick off an Arpa process here very soon. And so a big chunk of the money in this report will start to be tagged to. To I think different projects, which I think will help us also understand the priorities. And and I think it should be part of our, you know, it it this should be woven into our budget process, not just this year. But as Grant mentioned, every year. And and I think that, you know, understanding. You know, getting a sense from the council during that budget process where those priorities lie will be important. I think sort of, I forget what what maybe third point, Grant also mentioned that. You know, it should also, I think, at some point become somewhat determined by data. You know, we have, we don't have a good sense, you know, we've spent some time talking with Bill about this and Grant yesterday. We we just don't have a good sense of of a good roadmap for when the cycle of when our streets and roads and sidewalks need repair. And there are, there are services we can procure that will allow us to know that. And and that, you know, in in some ways, taking it out of, you know, letting it be driven by data will also be helpful. And 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 for part of this plan, for a big part of this plan, which is the streets work, right? That, hey, you know, I'm just going to use my street, just Liberty Streets do at this point. Washington's at this point and we'll have a, we'll have a roadmap of every year, we'll know sort of when every, when when the an upgrade is due. And that will help inform the priority because it will be informed, not by a staff recommendation or maybe a council thought. But it'll be backed by data that 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 will help us get to that that decision. And it shouldn't just be for the streets. We should, we should be tracking when the HVACs are, you know, the useful lives of the HVACs and the and the roofs. And and so I think there's certainly going to be a point, you know, there there's a an important role for, you know, the administration recommendations, the council priorities. But I think to the extent we can have it be driven by data will will help us as well.
Yeah, I'll start with Amy Gelford. Amy. Your, your sound isn't coming through, but your mute symbol is off. Might be a setting thing. How about we, can we look back to you? I'll I'll go to Bernadette Rose and then you can check your settings.
Hi, thank you. This is Bernadette Rose and I'm speaking as a chair of the ADA Committee. While we're talking about capital improvements, improvements to our buildings and our sidewalks and streets. Who's speaking for all the people with disabilities that live in our community? When we look at our staff, do we have people with disabilities in our staff? Are we shortchanging ourselves, the opportunities of having talented people here? Because when we're looking at some of these upgrades, we're failing to address some of the accessibility. Problems that have plagued the, some of our old buildings. So I'd just really like to encourage you and I know manager. Cyril Castro that I've emailed you a couple of times about some of these concerns and pretty simple things. Some of them don't really cost much, but how do we make sure, how do we ensure that? When we're doing the HVAC up upgrade and we're having to change or reconstruct part of a building. That we're also taking into consideration the accessibility issues that that are with that. And when we're upgrading the auditorium, how do we make sure that we continue to make that as fully accessible as possible? Not just to wheelchairs, but people who have visual impairments and have hearing impairments. And how do we maintain, we are struggling throughout the city, it seems. And I know Bill is aware of this with the crossings, the pedestrian crossings, especially one of them. Where the sound hasn't worked out for quite some time. So as we go forward, I think those are critical things also, they're life threatening things when they don't work. And we need to to keep them in mind. And so who among you will keep those in mind when I'm not here? Thank you.
Hi, Bernadette. So we, we do include some ADA specific projects. Certainly the, I believe, certainly the restroom that City Hall is included in there. I know we have some entryway upgrades as well. So thank you, Bernadette, for raising those. I think we, you know, they are top of mind. I think it would be helpful to continue hearing from the committee, you know, I'd love a review of this from the committee. And to the extent that there's things that are gaps, then there are things we'll obviously consider and look at and and work into here. But but yes, we we do, we, the ones that, at least the high priority ones that I, that I know you've raised to me. Are certainly included in this first draft of the plan.
Amy Gelford.
Let's try this. Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay, sorry, I had the wrong microphone. Yeah, you know, we always wish we had these types of plans like twenty years ago, right? So that we would be in a better position now. And I think it would be hard to argue against many of the things that are in here. They all look like great ideas, but what I keep thinking about is is things like the discussion you had a few weeks ago about the DPW garage. And what a huge capital need that is. And there's the document on the DPW website that I assume Bill and his staff, Billy and his staff put together. About, you know, all upcoming various projects on streets and roads and that sort of thing. And they're just massive, high-ticket items. And so when I see a whole bunch of ten thousand dollar items. Each of which you could make an argument for it being valid, I get really worried about the, the seven and eight digit. Projects getting done, particularly when you say you're understaffed. And, you know, how does the scale in terms of staff ability to keep up with these projects? If you do ninety small projects as opposed to four big ones. And four big ones may not be as much fun, but those may be some of the ones that are needed for. Critical safety and public health. I think our public works campus now is like a public health risk for the staff who are in it. You know, just based on driving by, I've never toured it, but you know, I want them to have a better facility and. You know, I just, looking at this, I kind of wonder how things were, to your question earlier about how things were ranked. Like, which of these are critical health and safety items? Which of these are, we have to do this to meet regulations? Which of these are nice upgrades and which of these are nice wishlist items that we really would like to do as a community? But maybe we have too many other huge critical bills to do them in this timeframe. So I'm just particularly thinking about staff versus number of projects and how that math works out.
Many, many good points. And if I could add to that, council spent a considerable amount of time when we were developing the RP. Emphasizing a prioritization process and and so, Grant, it sounds like you would like to speak to that, that.
I, yeah, you know, it's, I, I think the prioritization of work is is certainly a a good conversation to have. I I I will make a few comments that the the priorities that are included, the one, two and three that are included for each project. Within section three of the report, those were the departmental priorities. And and as each department looked at their universe and 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 what needed to happen, you know, first in in their mind. That's, that's what got got the ones and and certainly, you know, I understand the 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 thought about. Let's do all the ones in year one and then it will worry about everything that's a two and a three when we're done with the ones. The 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 issue with that kind of becomes project phasing, right? And and like I touched on earlier with the the heating ventilation and air conditioning systems. You know, for for a a department director to manage four large HVAC installations in the summer. Is is going to be all that person does. And so we do have kind of like we talked about that capacity issue. And so we would like to do all the ones in year one. But, you know, Bill can't pave that much asphalt in a year and and Jeff can't do that many HVAC units. And 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 that story repeats itself through each department, right? And so, so there is necessarily some phasing of work. And and also, you know, DPW facility, there there are some projects that that will just take time. And and take effort to to scope the project and and to really understand what the project needs to be. And so, you know, I understand the point about priorities and that's really, quite honestly, why I say this should be part of the annual budget process. Because these are prioritized at the department level. And so you folks will have an opportunity through the budget process to say, well, you know. This is a lot of roofs that we're going to do this year. Let's, let's maybe move some of this around over to parks and and spread some of the benefit out. And and within the the database, we do include, you know, project locations. So even we can look and say, are are all of these projects in Ward One? And what about Ward Two and Ward Three? And and so, you know, you folks will have that opportunity to address the projects that are that are tackled each year through your your budgeting and appropriation process.
So I think I'd make the observation that one of the strengths of this is that it's a start. And so Grant shows, I'm going to characterize it, a very simplified priority system, one, two or three. And as this plan matures, I would fully expect that it it probably isn't a three-point system. It's going to grow into a fifteen-point system so that you can look across HVAC needs against. Do we need to put new guardrail up on merchants' row and and actually look at that and say, which has better value for the community? But until we start this process, those insights don't have a place to live. And so I had a really long list of projects, but now I actually have a set of targets over time. And that's a, that's a huge change. I I don't have to own as a department what those priority numbers are. But I need to help build the system that gets people to to decide them. And so it'll get better over time. We just started with a straightforward one, two, three, and it's, it's just a start.
And and if I may, and and Amy, thank you for those points. I mean, they were, hit the nail on the head. And and frankly, it's a lot of the things that we've been talking about with the department heads and with Grant throughout this process. And, you know, I just really say it comes down to prioritization and and trade offs. And frankly, for us, it may be that the trade off is to get the extra capacity that we need. We may need to contract project management, which may maybe means we spend fifty thousand on project management. To do three hundred thousand dollars of capital improvement. And and, you know, yeah, we don't get the fifty, you know, we lose, lose, right? The fifty thousand to a project manager, but but that results in maybe three hundred thousand dollars of of capital improvement. And that might be a worthy trade off so that our residents feel those those improvements. So it's all about prioritization because as, you know, as you can see, the the needs and the resources don't add up. So we're going to have to prioritize anyway. I would just, you know, I'd caution though that you're, and you're absolutely right, that there's things that, there's nice to haves. And there may be just some maintenance and repair ones and there, there's also. And there there's also things that maybe that are ones, a lot of them that are at risk of failure. Um, but uh also caution that, you know, the more we put off the maintenance and repairs and the twos and the threes, they don't become fours and fives. They become ones. And so um we have to be really cautious about, um you know, it's really easy to 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 punt and to, you know, to to hold it off for another year, but those things usually don't get cheaper and they usually don't get better. So um Amy, you're absolutely right on your point, but but uh just caution us all that um there's there is a cost to also not um not doing the small ones.
What I had to that too, in that we don't want everything in a planning phase or an implementation phase. We want a pipeline and planning, scoping, implementation, and make sure that there's something at every stage in the cycle. So that that it's uh we have that spread out. But to your point about, you know, prioritization and having data, that is only good once it's run through an analysis or some type of methodology. And uh and I think that's one of the reasons why the council emphasized the conversation about uh prioritization and developing um uh this contract. Because no, you know, nothing's value neutral, no profession, engineering profession, not value neutral, planning profession's not value neutral. Um, and uh and so thinking about what method is going to be used. And I I think, and we already talked, mentioned, you know, three or four, I think excellent criteria, and there's probably many others.
Oh, yeah.
But at some point, it gets to um brass tacks and a budget session. When you decide, is this project going to move forward or is it not?
Right.
Or how much money is going to be in this bucket or not going to be in this bucket?
Right.
And uh and I think we want to, I I think we need to have a system where we're where we know, fairly confident that we're making the best decision based on the best available data and running it through a machine that that gives us uh helps us evaluate the relative pros and cons of different projects.
So right.
Um, so that that seems like maybe that's the, that maybe not this year, but uh but uh something to strive for.
Absolutely, no, and 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 really um and and really important, one of the reasons we tried, you know, thought it was good to break this down into a two-year, really specific work plan versus and then having a broader out your look was because we have this, you know, a ticking clock in our um and so um I I think, Mary, you're absolutely right, we have to, you know, we have to make sure we get these next two years absolutely right and that they are the right priorities um for for everyone here at this table. Because money like that doesn't come around often. So uh you know, I I think um I think faster timeframe than you're thinking, uh because we we can't, we can't miss the boat on how we use this money.
Council Lozong.
Uh, thank you. Um, you know, I couldn't help but notice that the the emphasis on paving and sidewalks, streets and sidewalks was roughly twenty percent of the total, you know, there 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 was no increase, uh essentially, when I think that might have been a bit of the expectation when folks pass the local options tax that would provide seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for street sidewalks and capital. And it doesn't seem like we're, you know, placing um greater emphasis on that. That and that's really just a comment for future discussions. Um, and then lastly, um i- i- are you going to try to match up on in section five, the expenditure forecast? Are you going to take a stab at a revenue forecast as well?
Yes, yeah, I think we will.
Okay, it's just not there yet.
It's just not there yet.
I mean, I couldn't help but notice that, you know, the expenditure side in twenty-six went up to four point two million from one point.
Absolutely, no.
And my first thought was, we can't pay for that.
No, absolutely, Council Lozong, you're absolutely right. And and that's um our focus was really targeted on these first two years um on the the priorities side and the expenditure side because of really ARPA driving that. That we we have to make sure that uh these next two years, we we get absolutely right. But you're right, you've you you look out in the out years, it's a it's a scarier picture. Um, but that's, I think that that expenditure side, we we should have both sides of the equation all the time. And and I think uh that has to be just part of it um moving forward.
And is is there any thought to perhaps pulling streets and sidewalks out of this, making making it sort of a sub-report? Because you know, generally speaking, streets and sidewalks are predictable. Absent, you know, water main break, which despite what some folks would like you to believe, it really is fairly infrequent in the city. It doesn't happen all that often. Um, you you know, you you can generally predict the life of a street based upon, based upon traffic, based upon, well, we know that this street doesn't have a very good subbase. And you know, i- i- and it's also something where you can literally list the streets and let people know that look, you may be waiting until two thousand twenty-seven, but we're we are going to get to your street and barring barring some sort of, you know, natural disaster or or uh water main break or or something like that. Uh, this is when you can expect to see your street done.
Council Lozong, I ask what what advantage you think there would be to pulling it out versus embedding it in the plan?
Little, I I think the I think the advantage would be that, you know, generally, streets are a little more predictable than vehicles. So I mean, we've had vehicles fail after three years that we expected would last six, and it's not anyone's fault, it's just you know, how things roll. So you know, at one point, we had kept, uh we we had separated uh the infrastructure sidewalk streets and 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 we just kept it separate again because it was a little more predictable um than capital.
Yeah, so we we did, we kind of went a little bit back and forth on this. Um, w- w- our first draft had very specific street sidewalk improvement projects. We dumped it into an an appendix um because we thought it might um just for presentation cluttering purposes, we we thought it might overwhelm there. So I think it's starting on page seventy-one, you'll see at least a the beginnings of of the specific street sidewalks projects. Which we can, I think we could probably build out more if we needed to. And and I think the um, you know, certainly having software data and to to help us better understand the whole streetscape will will help us do that more predictably. But we, it's funny you mention that because we we've, we just moved it in the report to the back as a ease of reading.
Gotcha.
Addition.
Understood. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? Well, I think uh, you know, it all, Council Lozong's always quick to hone in on the number. And uh formally, those those are some.
I'm excited to have, you know, and I hope none of my comments, Nicholas, are perceived as critical. Uh, I I'm just thrilled to have a plan.
Yeah.
I have my own five-year plan. I mean, death is a huge variable, you know, but uh no, but I can tell you, you know, it pretty much exactly where I'll be in five years. And and I think you got a plan, and and smart businesses, smart organizations have a plan. So I I'm just, I'm thrilled to have this. I mean, I dug right into it as soon as I opened the email. So, thank you. It's uh to all of you.
Thank you.
And and my my point about the number was going to be that although those are big numbers, we're we're in a pretty exceptional time of federal opportunities with the infrastructure bill um getting sorted. And in addition to all the the state money that's rolling out, so this is such a step in the right direction, really thankful for it.
Thank you, Grant.
Thank you all.
There are no other questions? That takes us to um the addition item.
Thank you.
No, up upcoming business, anything that anybody wants to preview?
We have a.
Well, I thought we did that after ten, ten, or we did that.
I thought we had done it at ten, but.
Oh, there's two tens here, that's why, okay.
Oh.
Um, yeah, ten even, all right. Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, this is your uh.
Oh.
Item.
Yeah, um, yeah, uh, thank you, uh Nicholas, for forwarding uh the and I call, I'm calling you Nicholas, it's a little informal, and I apologize, I'm still struggling with manager Sterling. And I can't say it quickly and I don't want to butcher it, so. No, for some reason that. I'll get it, and Karen says it like, well, she's, so she's Italian, so she just doesn't like that. But I I'll get there, probably December, mid-December, just uh mark it on your calendar. Uh, thank you for sending the um the link to the meeting. Uh, you know, I watched it um a few times. And, you know, I I gotta tell you, my reaction was just, I was disappointed. Um, just disappointed in a lot of things. Um, you know, for example, I certainly don't, eh, the committee at times seems to, I shouldn't even say the whole committee, that's not fair. Um, but you know, e- even the name change, I don't mind the name change, but technically, you know, so the chair stares, stands on technicalities and got a lot of it wrong. Failed to mention that, and Mary, you certainly know this because I would, I was on the receiving end of it and got overridden by a council a few times. If the members don't like what the chair is doing with regard to recognizing people or the time limits. And, you know, Mary, you've been very generous with time limits. There have been times where you've told people two minutes and they've gone on for five or six, but they're keeping it civil and they're providing the council with information, so you let them go. And, you know, I I I found the the one limit timeline, if you're visiting at the end of the meeting. So, okay, if I'm visiting and I want to contribute to an issue at hand, I'm I'm not going to be, eh, it was just really disappointing, you know, to hear the council characterized as unwilling to help. That is, that was not the message I sent, I'm absolutely willing to help. I wanted to respect the committee and give them the opportunity to, you know, work through this stuff on their own. And 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 somehow, and I think that was a sentiment of every one of us, you know, we didn't want to help, but we also didn't want to be overbearing and we didn't want to be forcing um, you know, solutions uh on anyone. So I I, you know, I I I I don't even know where to go. Uh, you know, again, the name change, out of respect, they should have talked to the council about that because we created the committee, they didn't change the name. The name is still the Diversity and Equity Committee. The charge is the councils, we create the committees, we appoint the members, and we change the names. Now, if that's what the committee wants, I'm happy to do it. But i- i- it just, it really seems like a one-way street. And and I'm at the point where I'd like to suspend the committee, not dissolve it, that. But I think it's time for a timeout, I don't even want, you know, I just want to think for a little while.
Oh, Council Stockwell.
I would like to discuss the personnel in in greater detail now to move into an executive's in in an executive session to do so, to discuss the committee.
Uh, so to to adjust the agenda under executive session to discuss personnel as.
Yes.
We do that.
And would you be doing that under the appointment or evaluation of a public officer, provided the?
Yeah, I'm, I'd struggle to get there, sir. Only because eh I I'm not going to, y- you know, obviously, I I mean, I had to mention some of the remarks of the chair because it was the chair that made the remarks. But I, but like I said last week, uh, the chair has done some very good work, not just in this area, but also in other areas in the city, and I recognize the value in that. But I I I was, you know, I think it should be out in the open, I was disappointed. I was disappointed the way the council was characterized. I I was just disappointed how the meeting started. It's like you poured gas and lit a match, and it's, eh, why? You know, that that's what the Tuesday night meeting was for, so that everybody could have their say and and we could all understand each other, and then, you know, like we do as friends, you you sometimes have a little blow up and then you move past it. And and you try to do better. And it doesn't seem like, doesn't seem like that's going to happen here.
All right, so here, one councillor wants to discuss an executive session, one uh one's a suspension, councillor Sean Bell, councillor was uh councillor Boo, councillor Sean Bell.
I agree with both councillor Lozong and councillor Stockwell. I think there's some aspects about this that can be discussed openly. And I I agree about the opening comments, I agree about um the characterization of the council. I was a little surprised by both. And then there were parts in the middle that I was also surprised at. However, I think that this is now going into delicate territory. And I think we need to discuss it in executive session. And I I also understand, um is this the question of, is this personnel? You know, is this? But it is an appointee of the of the council. And in some ways, we are responsible for following through on on how our appointees are conducting themselves in a meeting that has pretty strict rules as to how it goes.
So it's councillor.
Yeah, I I frankly don't have a strong feeling as to whether or not we should discuss this in executive session. I do think an executive session would be appropriate, just because I think that in a in appointed member of a a a member of a committee that's been appointed by the council is a is in that capacity, a city official, and we have the right to discuss personnel of city officials in executive session, so I'm not concerned about that. But I don't want to get into a precedent either uh where we are basically rehashing what happens at every committee meeting at council. I'm not saying there's not an issue. I'm just saying I feel that we, I feel the council spoke last week or two weeks ago, whatever it was, uh that we need to give this committee some space. And, you know, like Tom just mentioned, councillor Lozong just mentioned about friends and family, it gets messy. You have issues, you work through issues. Uh, and I just don't feel that we have given them enough space and time uh to make any decisions about suspending the committee, et cetera, so that's where I am right now.
Councillor Boon.
So, um absent from coun- councillor Lozong, I probably have the most established relationship with the chair. Um, and if it were anybody else, um I would be in a different position. Uh, you got my email. Uh, and I I firmly stand behind what I said in the email. And my recommendation is to accept the the report. Say thank you, appoint a person to VLCT, VLCT as a staff member and dissolve the committee. And and I understand that other people are not interested in doing that, and I fully understand that. Uh, that's where my my thought process is. And going into executive session to hash out whether or not what happened at Thursday night meeting, which I attended and was extremely disappointed. And having conversations with Mrs. Mulvaney afterwards, it it was, it was very difficult. And I just, my preference would be just to dissolve the committee and, you know, take the advice and add a a staff person to the VLCT. Um, uh, you know, I I'll just make that motion.
Second that motion.
It's not warranted.
And we can ratify it next week, so.
Well, if I could jump, jump in, I I have a question, councillor Boon, you said you sent an email to council, was that? I I don't recall seeing that, was it something today? And and why are you sending emails outside of a duly-warrant meeting?
Did I get an email from you? I'm sorry if I missed. Sent it, where did it go? Because I don't, I don't recall receiving anything from you.
Well, I apologize, I thought.
So you didn't send an email?
Yeah, I didn't.
Thirty.
I thought I did.
Okay, well, uh, either way, uh, there's a a motion and a second uh uh to
No.
To uh, you said to dissolve the committee. Um, uh, it would need to be ratified as 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 an item that's on the agenda approved. Um, so further discussion. Councillor Dearing.
So I I've received a lot of uh uh people that uh complaints, quite frankly, of people that are upset um and have no faith in this committee any longer. Um, and wonder where do we go from here? Uh, and really, from what I've been told from the constituents that I've met with, they would like to see the committee dissolved. They're not sure how we can trust in this committee any longer with the actions and the things that have gone on. We want them to play nice, we asked them to play nice. The first meeting after we asked them to play nice, there was a statement made uh that was not playing nice. Uh, and then that was uh proceeded with more phone calls um to me. Um, really, uh, trying to get. Um, really, uh, trying to get me to to ask this chair to resign and to step down. Um, so I feel pretty strongly that. This committee can't work itself out. That I'm not interested in, uh, spending money for a mediator. And for these members to meet, uh, to to kind of play nicely. Um, they've been working nicely together since the, uh, since the start of the committee. Danielle made that very clear in her report last week. Um, those facts have been disputed by, um, Ellen. Uh, saying that that's not true. Um, but uh, that's my stance on this is that I feel. Uh, as Award Three, uh, constituent as as well as Award Three counselor. Um, that this committee needs to be dissolved.
Counselor Sean Bell.
Um. I'm, I'm not willing to go with dissolving it right away. I. I. I wonder if that almost becomes. Almost an escape route.
It is. I'm not going to lie because I don't want to have to.
Okay.
Just for clarity.
I mean, but that's sad, um. I think part of the goal of the committee was to learn to work together. And. I do, I know that's at this point probably sounding like La La Land. But. In some ways, I think it's important to take the stand of. How do we work this out? And as a council. Trying to ensure that we work it out. I disagree about, um, a mediator. I. I think it could be worth. Our time. I think there are ways of working that I saw in the videos. During that that both of meetings, having looked at the two videos, that. I I thought could. Be improved. But I I hate to see us. This is the wrong terminology. I'm going to say cut and run.
Counselor Wasazak.
Um, so I am absolutely completely opposed to the dissolution of the Diversity and Equity Committee. Uh, we have a long way to go. In Berry, in Vermont, and in this country before we achieve a society that is, uh, both diverse and equitable. Um, and, you know, I think that we have, I know that we have a city, I have extremely conservative constituents. I have extremely liberal constituents. Uh. It is the, it is a very, uh, we have a very politically diverse city. It's one of our strengths. And I think that the Diversity Equity Committee helps serve as a microcosm to deal with those things. Uh, so. The point, th- this, yes, it it's it's good to be civil. It is good to be nice. But that cannot be the only standard by which that we judge our work, that the only standard by which we judge the work of the committee. There are hard conversations. That are going to turn contentious around issues of diversity and equity. We know that, and that's why this committee exists, to help have those con- hard conversations. Within our community, because it's not fair and it's not right for the council to just ignore them and pretend as if these issues don't exist. When we have had documented hate crimes occur within this city within the past two years, that's happened. We can't pretend it hasn't happened. And we need to a- address these issues continuously. It's not, one day we're going to wake up and let's set a goal of. Achieving a completely equitable Berry by the end of twenty twenty-four. That's great. We can achieve that now based on twenty twenty-two standards, but two years from now, there's going to be new issues to address. There's going to be more work to do. So eh, dissolving, I I agree completely with Counselor Sean Bell, dissolving the committee is cutting and running. And we can't do that. We have a responsibility as the governing body of this city to work through these issues, and I think that that's what we have to do. Like I said, I'm not trying to say that we don't have a problem. I'm not trying to say that there's aren't, that there isn't an issue that the council has to address, but dissolution is absolutely not it.
Oh, Sarah Holman.
I'm going to do my my best to keep my thought process. Going in the right direction. I I agree with you. I think that. That there is a lot of work to be done. I think that. The work of the Diversity and Equity Committee can be fruitful. However, the meeting that I watched from last Thursday, two days after, uh. Eh, opinions expressed by, uh, members of the city, members of town and council members. This, the chair of this committee. Painted the council in a negative light. And also slandered a person that sits on the committee. And that's not okay. That's that's not a gesture or or a a olive branch in any sort of way. That's not somebody that's that's, to me, seems like they're willing to. Work this out. What I saw and what I witnessed was a chairperson. Who's a bully and doesn't want opposing views and doesn't want to have those difficult conversations, wants it to be. One way and one way only. That's what I saw and that's not good for our city. That's not the kind of diversity and equity committee that we need to support. Thank you.
Uh, before going to Councilos, are there any other members of public that want to speak to this? Uh, John Page, I'm sorry.
First, I don't want to, uh, pretend that I, um, am aware of of the flap that happened in this committee. Um, but obviously, th- there were some things that didn't go well. Um, and acknowledging that. Um. A diversity and equity committee. Uh, is even having one is a big step for the city. Um. Yes, we have a a broad range of political, uh, uh rift, uh, in the city. Um. And. It's unsettling to me. To think that we have a diversity and equity committee. And things didn't go smoothly, so let's can it. In that light, I have to remind some people, uh, there's new counselors that weren't here for this. Um, but this council doesn't have very perfect behavior either. We had a really messed up fight over chicken ordinances, three pages of chicken stuff for half a page of dog stuff. Okay, and dogs are a bigger problem in this community than chickens. So it's obvious, not every group, every committee or council has got perfect behavior all the time. I don't know how many times this council has had such a poor performance that we had to take an ordinance fight and put it on the city ballot. I don't mind times that's happened, probably not many times, maybe the first and the worst we've done. So if the, um, Diversity and Equity Committee, um, had a big faux pas. Let's call it what it is and move on. And make an improvement. Thank you.
Uh, Rose, Rosemary. You, you're up first, so I'm just going in order.
Uh, I just want to start by, uh, thanking you for your service. Tough road, uh, you guys, you guys take. Uh, I'm very passionate about this city. I grew up here. And when things are not right in my eyes, I'm going to voice my concern, especially now that I'm retired and I have more time. So if you'll just allow me, because I am passionate about this, I'm really ticked off about this.
This looks like this could be a treatise.
We'll, let's see what you think. I I opted not to read the chair's words. I thought maybe we'd have a video tonight so people could refresh their memories on what this woman said. After the council suggested. That she played by the rules and played nice. And she did everything but. That was a city employee, she'd be fired. And you can't, you can't argue with me on that one. I don't know much, how much more evidence you need. I really don't. Two meetings, only two meetings. How much more evidence do you need? That the chair and some members. Other members. Have deniable biases that are so profound against Mr. Tobor. And and topics come together. I I just don't believe it. Eh, I, they don't have it in them. It seems like these people live in their own little bubble. They have trouble working in the real world with with people with with differences of opinions. The real ru- world allows for differences. That's what we are. Everyone is all about rights and choices, except when it's freedom of all of our rights. Then all bets are off in this committee. There's no doubt. Counselor Shambal, we're getting some press, and I think frankly, we can all admit it's there. Hippocritin and hypocri- hypocrisy and intolerance. That is driving the news on this committee. These members' biases are so obvious. Evidenced by their own words and actions. Yet somehow you cannot see it. You cannot see it for what it is. And somehow, I'm thinking you need to. Own up to your own biases. Do something about this. Six weeks now. We have dealt with this controversy unnecessarily. Do your job. This is not right, what this chair is doing and what some of these members are doing. It's wrong. And I would suggest that it's degrading our community. Those were your words last week, counselor. And I think our community's had enough.
Thank you for your comments. Well, Mauer.
We have some online too, whenever.
Oh, no, feel free, yeah.
Yeah, no, I wasn't trying, I was just making them aware that we had.
Last two meetings have probably been two of the most disturbing things I've ever witnessed. And it, you know, most of the time when you have problems. Like you have arguments. It's two parties engaging. What I have seen in both of those meetings. Is really one person who is bullying another. And the other person is somehow keeping his composure and not arguing back, not. Getting into the fray and trying to rise above it and just, you know, being here, making statements, etc. Now, I personally, um, think it is a wonderful thing to have a diversity and equity committee if they're truly diverse. And they're truly inclusive. And maybe, maybe not dissolving the committee is the answer, but maybe having. A different chair or asking, um, the chair and the other, her other cohort cohort. To take a break. Maybe they need their own personal training. I don't know. Um, there are two members of that committee who are very reasonable and seem to see the bigger picture, and I'm talking about. Uh, Greg, I don't know how to say his last name, and Mr. Toborg. The, they seem to see the bigger picture that we all do belong here and they're open to conversations and then. Just watching the video, seeing the video, it's really sort of like a ganging up on them. It's very disturbing. Um, everybody's reading about it. It makes. It's like a clown show. I'll just be blunt. Now, you have done, you have given them grace. Last week, you gave them grace. She failed, the chair failed miserably. If if that was a a place, uh, if that was my profession, I would have been fired. And my profession, if you make a mistake, you better clean it up. You don't get a second chance. So, um, that's, that's what I would do. And it's now in your court and it is your responsibility because now you have. But you are involved and you have given them grace. They have failed. And now the ball is in your court, and I do hope that. You will do what's right truly for diversity, equity and inclusion because we. We all want that. It it is, it's not. Mr. Toborg is is not putting up a shield and and being against diversity. We're seeing the exact opposite opposite and it's just truly deplorable and and very, um, disturbing and. Truly sad. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, Wellmawar. I'll go online, uh, I, who was first?
These are pretty much in order.
Okay, uh, Bernadette Rose.
Hi, thank you. Um. I would ask City Council. To reconsider. And I'm not sure why, um, there's so much, uh, reluctance. To support the request to. Um, to have either a facilitator like Counselor Stockwell suggested last week or. Uh, a mediator. Um. The attacks. On social media. Of the chair. And of members of the committee who have differences of opinion from those that are being. Uh, cited as being level-headed and, uh, people with. Uh, i- it's a total. Um. It's it's an, it's all about opinions and it's all about bias. And. We have lived for a very, very long time with this, so much so that. When we had a disagreement before. Some counselor just said. Well, let's just send it to the voters, you know, w- we didn't work it out. We didn't talk about it. It was like, well, let's vote. So are we going to say, well, let's, let's take a vote across the city to find out whether or not you want to keep. Uh, Joel and Mulvaney as chair of this committee, or if you're going to throw her out because. She's trying, or it appears to me that she is trying to stay the course. And while some city councilors felt she was attacking city council or saying demeaning things. City council said. We're not spending any money to help this group. I heard that. And everybody heard that. We want to give you the space to work it out on your own. And I think that's not what they were asking for. And so. Is that fair? And I think for people to personally attack each other all the time. Uh, I can't tell you the kinds of remarks that are being flashed around in social media. Uh, unless you go and you look, it's how horrible and awful and terrible. And. I know that people have strong opinions and they come from s- from places where they have been. Trying to stand up for the rights of all the people in our communities. And to take one person and turn that person into a martyr. Because that is a person who has been. A privileged part of our society as opposed to people of color, people who are. Uh, native people, people with disabilities. I think we're forgetting what that means, so. Um, I just really appreciate what Counselor Wasazak said. And I hope that you offer this committee. Uh, opportunity for mediation. And, uh, and a little bit less. Public vitriol. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Bernadette Rose, and I did see, it's it's getting on to nine twenty, so I I might, uh, I'm going to ask that the comments be limited to. To two to three minutes. Uh, I think, uh, who's up next? Rachel Nelson? Oh, you're, when you're not coming through, I think you might have a setting issue again. I'll look back to you, Garrett Grant.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Right, thank you. The counselor said they felt was it gasoline or kerosene was being poured on this issue? Yet they want another city council meeting with residents pitted against each other. Another week. Of articles pitting citizens against each other, just let mediation proceed. It's literally been less than a week since our last discussion about this. The committee has not been given. A fair chance of process to properly work through their differences. No more political theater. Let's talk about policy. We just had an exciting presentation about the possibilities of our wonderful city. Why are we taking away from this important work that will move our city forward? A motion to dissolve this committee will make Berry look like a reality show that prioritizes drama over progress. Thank you.
Thank you, Garrett Grant. Uh, I'll look back to you, Rachel Nelson. Do you have your mic sorted out?
Is it working now?
It is, yep.
Oh, great. Hey, so, um. Oh, heavens. So I'm Rachel Nelson. We've covered that in previous meetings, but hey, um. I I guess I'm feeling like we really ought to question. I, I guess I'm feeling like we really ought to question this talk about personal rights and looking out for the rights of people. And I think that we really ought to question how quick we're looking to shut down a committee. I feel like we talk about very overt behaviors that are very obviously angry or upset. But I, I feel like it doesn't take very long being in this town to find out that all of our biases are showing tonight. And I apologize if that sounds like a terrible accusation, but I think there's a pretty clear divide there between the supposed left and the supposed right. And I find myself incredibly bothered by that. So as a person who works with kids, I would say that I would expect my kids to work it out. I would expect my kids, if they're having a conflict, to take a minute to look at who, doing what and why. I think they'd need to question themselves. And I would expect them to, to actually dive into those. It's not run away from them. I think it's pretty important to look and see if any member of a committee is looking to stop the personal rights of any other members of that committee. Because what we're still talking about is something that kills women, kills people with uteruses. My father's first wife died because she couldn't access that medical care and I would have died four separate times if I could not. If you have a member on a committee that is looking at equity and diversity, that is equitable. And pretending like it's not because somebody said, hey, put that microphone down. Don't say those things. It's so focused.
Time. Yeah, it is. You are at two minutes.
I'm happy with that. Thanks.
So that takes us to Amy Gelford.
Hi, I was just gonna say, it's, I think one thing that's really sad about all of this is city council members have said many times that the work of the committee is important and it doesn't feel like the focus is on the work. It's on the committee itself. It's what it's going to be named. How are the members fighting with each other? And I hope, I don't pretend to have the answer to this, but I hope I can get back to the actual work of the committee. You know, and I think one of the dangers it seems to me with having a separate diversity and equity committee is you need to make sure that that's not where the diversity and equity efforts live. They should be informing, you know, how is the city trying to deal with recruitment? Is there something different we can do with recruiting to help with staffing? You know, we're having all these discussions about how we're going to spend millions of dollars. Is, are we making sure we're hearing from everybody on that? You know, it's kind of like there should be a little diversity and equity piece to every single committee that's serving on behalf of the city, that they should think like, is our membership? You know, are we, are we, are we reaching out to people? Are we doing work that? You know, are we, are we thinking through all the options and all the people that this affects? And, you know? I think that's the danger of either looking at it as having a committee for diversity and equity or dissolving a committee. Like, I think the committee is a starting place and then it's that the work actually needs to feed into the work of the council, the work of the staff, the work of the other committees and hopefully all of us being thoughtful in the community about, is it the same ones of us? And I'm one of them. Is it the same squeaky wheels who come to city council? And make statements and send emails to people, you know, is it the same ones of us over and over again? Or does the whole city feel like they're part of, of our process?
Thank you, Amy. That takes us to Terry Rail.
Good evening. Thank you. I've had the pleasure of watching your last two meetings and listening to this discussion a lot of times now. And I think the outcome that you all had at your last meeting was appropriate, like the was, was a good and appropriate. But I, but I hear a lot of discussion about the charge of the committee and what the committee is supposed to be doing. And really the issue that you all have to deal with is behavior and actions of people. And I would ask you to address that in, in, in let the diversity and equity committee do the things that they're supposed to do, address the actions of a few. And then do the good work that they need to do.
Thank you, Mr. Rail. Mr. Toborg.
Thank you. I, I would like to just say that slander is not a difference of opinion. I'm looking at whether or not to file a lawsuit against Joellen Mulvaney for her slander at that last meeting. If the city council does not do anything, that means that they are condoning the slander. And if so, I think that potentially they could be on the hook. I would like to just address one of the something that one of the committee members, one other person said was, I, I will say I don't always agree with him, but Chris Roberts has always been a very reasonable member of the committee. I don't think mediation will help because I think, although I've gotten, had gotten along with Joellen Mulvaney for a long time. I think she has shown herself to just be a bully at this point in time. And as the only victim of political violence, as far as I know, on the committee. Frankly, in our current political climate, the slander that she made at the beginning of the meeting is something that some people who are unhinged, it could cause someone to just go off and do something. And I think, as I said, if nothing is done about that, then I think the city of Barry needs to look at their, what their responsibility would be at that point. At the previous committee meeting, I can understand that, as you said, tempers got hot. You know, people say things at the spur of the moment. What Joellen Mulvaney said at the spur was not a spur of the moment thing. That was a prepared statement that was made. Thank you. I, I'd also like to, you can see what she sent to the committee as far as the email that she sent to the committee about her next meeting.
Excuse me, Mr. Toborg. Can I just ask what the slander was?
I believe she referred to me as a white male supremacist. No, misogynist was the last meeting, but at this one, it was, I believe it was a white male supremacist. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I see one of the members of the committee and Greg, can you inform me how to pronounce your last name?
Cattell.
Cattell, thank you.
I am a new member of the committee and I've joined just at the right time evidently. Right now, I am not sure where this committee is going or trying to get. I joined this committee because they had a good goal to achieve. And I was ready to do some, some work on this. And so far, we've been in a turmoil of some, some sort. I don't know how we can get out of it, but I, I do see it as a leadership problem. And there's, there's two levels to this. One, I think the, the city council needs to really tell us what they expect us to do. What kind of a diversity and equity, equity committee do you want to have? And there's going to need to be some sort of restructuring and refocusing. Because for two years, and I, and I acknowledge a lot of work has been done. But right now, I don't think that we can move forward without some kind of restructuring, some kind of support, some kind of boost that can hold us up and, and try to get us together. The thing that, that is pretty disturbing and disheartening to me is the way how the chair has pushed us apart more and more. And, and I don't know any of these people really, I just joined, but even since I've been there, I've seen the divide within the committee just grow and grow. And that's not the kind of image we want to project.
Yeah.
You want to show for your diversity and equity committee. So I'm saying do something, do something positive to show your support and to help us get work done.
Thank you for your comments.
Withdraw my motion and make a motion for findings.
Findings for what?
We have a couple of things on the agenda before we go to executive session.
So you, you withdrawn your motion?
withdrew my motion to go into executive session.
And if I could, Mayor. I mean, I couldn't have supported it, Michael. First of all, I never got an email from you. I don't think any of us did, so you didn't. But just to be clear about a couple of things, the committee never asked this council for a thing. There were a few members who suggested, not the committee. So let's be real clear about that. And I couldn't have supported your motion, Michael, for Council Bruton, for one simple reason. If we dissolve the committee, we make those individuals bigger than the work and we make it about them. And I'm not going to do that. We can move, remove certain committee members if we have to. That's why my preferred course of action was to simply suspend the committee. And as a mom said this evening, you give people a timeout and try to figure it out and try to give them a chance to reflect. And that's what I would be more interested. I'm, I'm, I'm not interested in having, and I'm not sure when the next committee meeting is. But I, I, when?
Monday.
No, it's not. No, it's not. I moved to suspend the committee for a period of three weeks and then we'll deal with it. And it will give us all a chance to think a little bit. But no, we're not gonna, no, I, I, no. I need to think about it a little more. I need to talk to people a little bit more. But I think for the time being, I'm not interested in having to bring this up. And we all said the same thing. We were disappointed by the remarks to the chair. We were disappointed by the tone of the meeting. I'm not interested in doing this again next Tuesday. So my motion is to suspend the committee for a period of three weeks so we can figure this out thoughtfully.
Motion to suspend the committee for three weeks. Is there a second?
I'm gonna second it.
Second by Counselor Shambal. Is there any further, is there any discussion on that? Counselor Shambal.
I seconded that because I still believe we need to have a conversation between us that asks the question about mediation, I think that asks some bigger questions. So I'm happy to second it. As long as I know that in the offing, we're just not shoveling it under the rug and letting it hang too long.
No, I, Counselor, I put a time limit on it. And I stated unequivocally, I will not vote to dissolve this committee. That makes the hatred and the individuals and the hurt feelings bigger than the work. And it's not.
I agree. I agree.
Right, Counselor Waszak.
So my only question, Counselor Lozon, about the motion is, you stated you didn't, you don't want to do this hall again next Tuesday. Me neither.
Well, we're gonna have to. At some point, at, at some point, you know, and we heard from Mr. Cattell, and thank you for speaking up, Greg, because he is one of the more thoughtful and measured members of the committee. And there, there needs to be some reconciliation. There needs to be a clear path forward. There needs to be some direction from the council. But I, I just don't want to do this next Tuesday. I, I would just like to think for a little bit.
Can we set a date?
So there's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on this?
Add a discussion piece. You know, personally, I don't want to dissolve the committee. But I know that if we can get discussion about talking about dissolving the committee, it's going to get a lot of wheels turning in people's heads about what we can do to fix the problem. And, and that's what we need to do, is that we need to be able to fix the situation that's at hand and also make sure that it doesn't happen again. That's the biggest takeaway for me, is that we can have diverse and equitable thoughts without excluding people or thinking that there are injustices or, or victimization. I just want us all to get along without having to pay extra money for a mediator for people to get along. We don't pay extra money in the adult world to get along. We just have to get along. So that's, that's my discussion piece.
Counselor Stockwell.
Issues of, of diversity and equity are clearly very volatile. They rip communities apart. This isn't the first committee that's gone up in flames that has issues. And it's extremely difficult work, and especially if you feel like you're a member of a minority. It's incredibly hard. I think that we need to consider how we put people on this committee. And we need to reconsider that process. I don't really know Mr. Toborg, don't really know his thoughts. But if this were the women's struggle to get the vote back in nineteen twenty-one, we wouldn't want to put a guy on it who says, you know, you women, you really should just stay home and make dinner. Voting is too hard for your brains. So we have to make sure that people we're putting on the committee can in some way support the aims of the committee. After that, there has to be a follow of, of a civil process. Yes, of course. I mean, I've seen people in this, in this, on the council walk out in anger and slam and yell their voice and raise their voice. Every, that happens for everybody. But then, in the end, we have to be able to be civil with each other. And people have to be able to speak. But I would say that we have to reconsider how we put people on the committee. What is their commitment and who should be on the committee?
Thank you, Counselor Stockwell. And I'll note that, you know, this is happening in the context of a committee evaluation and thinking about what staff capacity, where, where, where might we want to reorganize or, or do things differently when it comes to appointments? So it seems like a potential, I, I agree with Counselor Lozon's motion that a, a potential recess, give everybody a little bit of breathing space. Talk about any issues of, of a valuation with public officer nature in executive session. And I'll state very clearly my, my firm commitment to this work, to this committee, to continuing this work. As Counselor Waszak said, you know, we've had a hate crime within the past two years in this committee. I've gotten calls about citizens that have been victims of racist incidents. And this, and, and I, and I believe victims. So and so it's here and it's not, you know, it's not unique to Barry. This is, this is, this is a nationwide problem and, and, and the communities that are being proactive and doing something about it are the ones that help make a difference, to help make their community more welcoming and inclusive. And, and I'd also agree with Counselor Stockwell that no committee is a forum for endless, you know, free speech. They're there to get the work done that, that council set before them. And the work of the, this committee, in my view, should be focused on, the challenges are, I mean, recruitment, retention, policies, confronting any, any hate incidents, being there as advisors. And so I, I think the work's important and, and, and on with that. So we have a motion and a second to suspend for three weeks. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Guys have it.
I would just, I would just like to, for a point of order, sorry.
I just want to make sure that I captured, I, I heard, I heard two nays. Is that correct?
I self-assure. Okay, yeah, all right. I just, I would just like to clarify that the only reason I'm voting no is because I don't like the precedent it sets. That council can just suspend the committee on an unwarranted agenda item.
And we'll have to ratify it next week.
I'm not disagreeing with the subject matter of the motion. I just don't like the precedent it sets.
All right. So we have a motion adopted.
Just a clarification of the, the next scheduled committee meeting for diversity and equity would be before the next council meeting, which was going to be not occurring on the eleventh anyway. So I just want to sorry to throw another wrench into it, but.
Of course.
So, so we've, but there's been an adopted motion to So the so we've, but there's been an adopted motion to suspend the committee for three weeks. We're done. With that discussion, we don't need to read emails. And and so whatever scheduled meeting is occurred, that needs to be canceled. And then give this this council time to loop loop back to that. And. And so that'll be when we're gonna definitely have a meeting. Okay.
Yep, that's fine. Just wanted to clarify.
So that takes us to item ten, upcoming business. Anything that you want to preview for us?
Really, the the FY twenty-four budget process is is. Next highest rank on the on our priority. We're working on a schedule to get department reviews started and. That'll start with, like I said, the general administration managers, clerk, finance, and then police and elections, yes. And then I believe that the twenty-fifth, we have police and fire on tap. So those are the the next two. Sections of of FY twenty-four budget review.
Any other items that anybody wants to preview? Okay. Alright, so that takes us to round table. I'll start with. Let's see, I would word. Break my brain this time of night.
Are we doing alphabetical order? There's a lot of pressure here. That might be, that might be all. I'm passing after that.
I'm gonna pass.
Okay, Counselor Sean Bell's passing, Counselor Dearing.
I'm just gonna say that with election season upon us, as I continue to say. Don't vote because of a letter next to somebody's name. Actually know who you're voting for. It's just, it's too sad of a thing that we're given this opportunity to express our right to vote. And people just go and don't really know who they're voting for. So really just educate yourself on who you're voting for, whether it be local, county, state, federal. Just really know. But I'll pass.
Starts at the other end and comes this way.
I think it's Stockwell comes before, oh, the.
No, Eldick comes before Esmer. Gotta give a shameless shout out to my wife Karen. Karen attended her last Our House of Central Vermont meeting. Yesterday, she attended her first meeting as president in two thousand and seven. And back then, you could only serve two terms as president. So when she reached her second term, they extended it to three. And then four, and then five, and then six. And so for the last fifteen years, I am so proud of her. Because she has worked tirelessly to make sure that a sexually abused child and their family. Get all the support and the resources they need. And she has worked hard. I don't recall the exact year, but she talked me into wearing a dress in a fashion show. I I still have to apologize that my legs aren't better looking. And we raised, it was an off the cuff remark, and I said, well, I'll wear a dress if it would raise some money. And she raised over five thousand dollars. So that is an organization, you know, we we've never talked. Because of the nature of the work, we can't really talk specifically about things. But that organization always, it still does, always meant so much to her. And, you know, I love you, honey. I'm sure it was hard to leave an organization that you care about so much. But I know that she left it because they have such great board members and such a great executive director now. So cheers, sweetie. And with that, I'm done.
Thank you, Counselor Lozon, Counselor Stockwell.
I was really glad to go to the Garfields Playground Meeting. It was a great turnout. People were really excited and they had lots of ideas. And that just seemed, you know, and they talked about the history, like people had been there for forty years or twenty years. You know, their kids use the playground and their grandkids use the playground. It was just a really nice feeling. And I'm hoping that we can make something happen there. And. The other thing I wanted to say was something else, which has kind of gone by, so.
It really hoped that when I graduated, my days of coming at the very end of the roster.
Seeing everyone else talk.
Next week, okay, I'll I'll have it done next.
Yeah. So just a couple of quick things. First, I had a great tour of Capstone Community Action this morning with Sue Minter, just seeing some of the amazing work and. Have a capstone learning about their weatherization work, the Capstone Community Kitchen. There's just so much going on there all the time, and Sue does a great job managing it all. And the thing I like about Capstone and talking to them is every time I talk to them, I learn about something new that they do or something new that they offer the community. So it was really great to see that space. I want to thank everyone else. Everyone who came down to Pearl Street Pizza yesterday to meet Becca Ballant, including counselors. Lozon, Stockwell, Sean Bell, and Mayor Hemerich. We also had some state senators. The lieutenant governor showed up. It was a really good turnout and a really great spot right in downtown Barry. With great folks. And the last thing is, with all due respect, we have heard a lot of misinformation the last two weeks. From people who are not lawyers, are not scientists, and are not doctors. About the implications of Article twenty-two. So I would encourage you to do real research into Prop Five, Article twenty-two. Read the reports from folks who are lawyers and doctors and scientists and vote for Article twenty-two, please. But that'll pass.
Counselor Wozzak, I just added that, you know, Caps, not only does Capsone. Manage a lot of stuff, but they also make time to innovate too, which I I think that's really impressive. About their shop and the microtransit program that they're they're rolling out, so.
Just an example of of the kind of work they do. They reached out to us today. And four members of our staff, in addition with them, work together to find funding. To turn the water back on for a mother with three young kids. Who was delinquent in their bill, and we had followed our process, but we we worked together to find. Find the funding, get things taken care of. And it's a shining example of what Capstone does and what our department, our staff people do. Pretty much every day, so.
Excellent. Does. I'd also add that there, the Central Vermont Chamber of Commerce is gonna be doing the Athena Leadership Awards. On the Italy Athena Young Professional Leadership Award, Saturday, November fifth, twenty twenty-two, five thirty PM. In the Governor's Ballroom at the Capital Plaza Hotel, there is a, there is a fee, and it's a, it's a great event. And I won't give away any surprises, but there may be some some very recipient. This year for that award. And, gosh, I had something else too. I can't remember what it was. So I think we'll call that a night. So we have an executive session though. And so we have findings on a couple of different things. We have negotiation, litigation, and I would offer. And evaluation. Of a public.
Should I recuse myself now or?
No.
We can handle that item at the end.
Yeah.
Okay, so noting that there will be a recusal for a piece of that, so, alright.
Did we have a second? I didn't hear a second.
Yeah, I'll second.
Motion by Counselor Bruton, second by Counselor Stockwell. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, the eyes have it. So there's a motion, is there a motion to enter executive session?
Motion.
So moved for the, are we going to be discussing the contract that you sent to us? Okay, could I ask the clerk to stay only for that part of it? Just had a question regarding charter.
And actually, I'm, I'm, is that the the twenty-two hill also? Wanted me here for that.
Twenty-two and then, yes, it's all.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, so there's a motion to enter and bring in the clerk and the manager. Is there a second? Second by Counselor Stockwell. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, the eyes have it, we'll enter executive session.
Oh, I remember.
We're now in open session.
To make a motion to come out of executive session?
Second.
Motion by Lozons, second by Sean Bell to exit executive session. It's uh 10:40. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.